It starts?
Oops, you're not. Do this. Yeah, you're dead.
No, as long as he's got it, he'll turn it on. Thank you, thank you. Welcome to this exciting evening. December 11th, 2018, we're getting ready to swear in. Can you hear me? Linda's going like this. No? Thank you. Now can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Hear me now. Okay, welcome everyone to this exciting evening. We're gonna start off with the swearing in of our two new board members. Four? Oh, I forgot, you guys kept swearing again.
Thank you.
Oh, well. And so, we're happy to have Superintendent Maharas here with us. Nice, thank you for coming. So, if we could have the four trustees that are getting sworn in. And of those of you that don't know, Superintendent Maharas, he is the Superintendent of the Orange County Board of Education.
Yes.
And elected himself.
Okay, well, thank you, and I so much appreciate Dr. Navarro and Board President inviting me here today to do this. It's an honor, and I do want to acknowledge the wonder of this great district. You really have a reputation that is beyond the county statewide, and so, that is a marvelous testimonial of your leadership. And the fact that the board is united as a board. You know, there's a lot of issues that you deal with that could be divisive, but I think at the end, you come together in behalf of our students. And I also want to salute Fred Navarro, Dr. Navarro, because he is a champion among leaders, and it's just a pleasure and a delight for me to know him as a colleague. I wasn't sure if you could. So, I wanted to just make a couple of very quick comments, because this is a sacred trust. It's a very sacred role that you are embarking upon, and it's great that you have your family and friends here to witness this. I wanted to remind you of three very simple points, and the first one is the matter of truth, that you are torchbearers of the truth. And you and I both know that the issues that we face, as I mentioned a little bit ago, are very complex, and you immediately may want to equivocate and compromise, and it's good to compromise, right? That's the spirit of collaboration, but there are some things that are sacrosanct, and you have to drive it. It's the truth, and you have to stand by that despite the pain. You are torchbearers of the truth. That's one. The next thing is courage, and I'm reminded of Eleanor Roosevelt, the four, she served for four terms with her husband as the First Lady. And this is a quote that I love, and it's a quote from her that deals with this matter of courage. "You must do the things you think you can't do." So, how many times have we found ourselves in a situation where we say, "Oh, I can't do that. I can't go do that, I can't do that," and yet, we have to understand that sometimes you have to do it. You're compelled to do it. And then, the last thing is the matter of kindness and civility. And here, I wanted to quote Winston Churchill. "A nation is judged by how it treats its weakest members." So, being kind to our students, civil, we see the incivility in life today, it's palpable, and yet, I'm so happy that here in Orange County, despite the fact that, you know, we can get into it with the best of them, I still think that we have a sense of decorum. So, let's take the oath. So, if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, and I'm gonna use the word "I," and then you insert your name in the beginning, okay? Okay, "I."
Charlaine Matoye.
Yeah, me also.
Ashley Anderson.
Ashley Anderson.
Okay. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you, and congratulations.
I'd like to, when the board members get back up here, I'd like to have them introduce their families that are here. In the meantime, I just want to point out that we have a couple former board members in the House. One is Judy Franco, sit in the front row. And then, right behind her is Tom Egan. See, they never leave, they just keep coming back. I didn't miss anybody. There was another board member out there, is there, that I missed? Okay, good. Okay, do you want to start with Ashley? You want to introduce, if you've got anybody here with you?
Sure. My mom and my stepdad, Richard, are in the front row here. And then, I have several friends from the community that I work with in Westside Costa Mesa. Christine Brooks, Miriam Godino, Ian Stevenson, Jimmy Paley, Sharon Heard, Lori Smith, I can't see in the back all the way, Jessica. Lots of people that I work with in Westside Costa Mesa. Janice, Steve, thank you for being here.
Okay, that's
Do you want to introduce somebody?
Well, for sure.
I know, I skipped you. I don't know why.
I normally don't bring people here, but
I know.
Two of my children, Anne and Rachel, are in the front row.
Great campaign manager there, yes. Anne Michelle?
I have my parents, Gordon and Lucy, in the front row, and my in-laws, and my in-laws, Gigi and Craig, and my husband Brady, and my kids, Penelope, Charlie, Linus, and Conrad. And my friend from growing up, Nicole Christopherson.
Wonderful. I didn't see the kids stand up. I made you looking at the wrong kids. Okay, yay. Okay, and Charlaine, or Ms. Matoye.
Oh, thank you. My better half, Scott, is sitting right there, and my bestie-bestie-bestie, who's really a sister from another mother, Linda. And I have several colleague friends, Mary Manis, Christine Anderson, Bob Kelly, Joanne Kopp, and PTA people from East Love and Harborview, Adriana Forché and Carol Crane. Did I forget anybody? No. Okay.
Do I have to take roll? Okay, thank you. I will give you a break after, so you can take pictures and stuff, just a five minute, but right now, we're going to do roll call.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Matoye?
Here.
Ms. Flor?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Okay, and we have no cards, correct? Okay, so, we'll take a five minutes, so you can take some pictures, and then we'll
Go into closed session?
Oh, then we'll go into, we'll take, yeah, five minutes, and then we're gonna go into closed session. So, thank you all for coming. Okay, before we go into closed session, I have a readout. The International School for Science and Culture's request for district facilities. What about, oh, okay. On closed session, it's gonna be in closed session, sorry. Okay, now we'll go into closed session, thank you. Easy breezy. Okay, we're ready to go. Welcome to our December 11th, 2018 meeting, our last meeting of the school year, and our first meeting with our two new board members. And so, welcome, we've had a lot of time to work earlier. They were sworn in at 3:30, sorry you missed it, and it was really nice.
Or not, some people were here.
Some people were here. So, we're gonna start with a readout from closed session. In the student discipline case number 18-05-77, the board took no action. So, we're gonna start with our opening ceremonies, silent invocation, pledge of allegiance by, I don't see your sign.
Alex.
Alex, I'm sorry, I'm not very good with things. And Alex, I'd appreciate it if you would say, "Ready, begin," when you are ready to do the pledge. Okay, but we're gonna do the moment of silence, yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, first up is adoption of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Adoption of agenda moved by Ms. Flor, seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Okay, carries. Next is adoption of minutes for November 26th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Yelsey, seconded by Ms. Flor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Two abstentions.
Oh, two abstentions. Two abstentions.
They weren't here at the meeting.
Martha?
You need to abstain.
They weren't here, so you're gonna abstain from the minutes.
Yeah, Michelle actually had to abstain.
It seems like you've been here forever. I apologize. Okay, two abstentions, our new board members. And then, now we're gonna move on to the fun part of the evening, the annual organizational meeting, which Fred is gonna run, or Dr. Navarro's gonna run.
Right. I'd like to open the annual organization meeting at 6:04. Okay, our first agenda item is approve the election of Board President 2019. May I take nominations from the floor?
Move that Ms. Matoye become Board President.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Black.
Move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be adopted, right Judy? Is that, where's Judy?
Okay, it's been moved to close nominations. Any objections? Seeing none, okay. All those in favor of Ms. Matoye as Board President 2019, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries, 7-0. Okay, election of
Stop smiling.
Election of Board Vice President 2019. May I take nominations from the floor?
I nominate Martha Flor as Vice President.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by, nominated by Dana Black, seconded by Ms. Matoye, that Mrs. Flor be nominated, be elected Vice President. Any other nominations? I will close nominations, not seeing any others, and call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 7-0, congratulations, Ms. Flor. Okay, election of Board Clerk 2019. Do we have a nomination from the floor?
I nominate Mrs. Black.
Second.
Nominated by Mrs. Matoye, seconded by Mrs. Flor. Do we have any other nominations?
Move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be
Okay. Any opposed? Okay, seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0. Congratulations, Ms. Black.
Thank you.
Okay. Election of crop representative. So, that the audience knows, a board member from each of the adjoining districts that are part of crop, send a board member as a representative to their board. And so, I'd need a nomination from the floor for
I recommend Martha Flor.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, sorry. I was napping.
Any other nominations?
It would be helpful if we had an alternate.
Okay, let's finish this one, and then I'll, if you, with the board approves, we'll ask for an alternate. Okay, so, I'm gonna close nominations, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do we have a nomination for an alternate for crop?
I nominate, I'm happy to do it if you would.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember who else was interested in this, yeah, just a minute. Let me just look real quick.
I'm happy to put my name in, 'cause you never serve, because Martha serves every time. So, I'm happy to
That's true.
And they know me there.
This is a two-year term though, right?
No. No, but I'm just wondering if it would be good for someone to do it.
I'd do it, I have a lot of, you know, people in my zone who have questions about that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'll nominate Michelle Bartow.
You don't go unless she does, yeah.
Second. But you can go in there.
You can go every time, which might be good. I nominate Michelle Bartow.
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination for Michelle Bartow by Mrs. Snell, and seconded by Ms. Matoye. Any other nominations? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Ms. Bartow. Okay, approve the election of Representative to Nominating Committee on County School District Organization 2019.
I nominate Dana Black.
Second.
Okay, so, Mrs. Snell nominated, Mrs. Black, seconded by Ms. Matoye.
Move that nominations be closed and a unanimous vote be valid.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0. Prove the election of liaison with Special Education Community Advisory Committee 2019. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Mrs. Black. And I'll nominate Mrs. Matoye.
Okay.
Okay, so, this is, this, how many people are on this?
Two.
I'll second.
Two.
Okay, are you seconding both, Mrs. Yelsey? Okay, so, nomination for Mrs. Black by Mrs. Matoye, nomination for Mrs. Matoye by Mrs. Flor, seconded for both by Mrs. Yelsey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0.
I'm wondering if we should also elect a alternate.
You know, that they're, they, board members can come to the meeting, because they have three or four during, and we also have to become members also.
Oh, you do? Okay.
So, just so you know, that you need to sign up with them, and then they, then we vote on them.
Okay, so, the other board members know that you can attend this?
And you can attend.
But only three can attend.
No, you can have more, but you just can't participate in the meeting, 'cause it's a brown act, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay, next is the nomination of the election of the School Attendants Review Board, SARB, Representatives for 2019. Do we have a nomination from the floor?
I move Mrs. Flor, Matoye, and Yelsey, and we could put Ms. Anderson in as an alternate, but she has to go through training first.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, do you all wanna, do you all wanna do that?
Yes.
Okay, good. And, and Ms. Anderson, you would like to be an alternate?
I, I would like to be in it, I don't know what the training entails that I, I mean, I'm sort of familiar with it, but
Well, they'll make sure, yeah.
I believe there are, will be plenty of opportunities for an alternate to participate on a routine basis, because there are many, many SARB meetings, and sometimes, not all board members can make it, so, having a fourth would be helpful. Okay, so, I have nomination for SARB Board, Flor, Matoye, Yelsey, and Anderson as alternate. Nomination was by Mrs. Black, seconded by Mrs. Flor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0. Okay, Representative to the Office of College and Career Education, nominations on the floor, are open from the floor?
Move that Ms. Anderson and Mrs. Yelsey be appointed to the Office of College and Career Education and CTE Advisory.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Ms. Matoye. Nominations are closed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes, 7-0. Okay, approve the election of District English Learners Advisory Committee, D-LAC, for one-year term 2019. Do we have nominations?
I nominate Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Bartow, and Mrs. Black.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and I'll close nominations. All those in favor of, moved by Mrs. Matoye, seconded by Mrs. Flor. All those in favor of having Mrs. Anderson, Ms. Bartow, and Ms. Black serve as Representatives to D-LAC, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries, 7-0. Okay, approve election of Student Board Member Liaison 2019.
Move that the immediate past president, Mrs. Snell, be appointed to that position.
Okay, seconded by who?
Me.
Ms. Black, okay. So, it was moved by Ms. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Black, to appoint Ms. Snell as the Student Board Member Liaison. Nominations are closed, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries, 7-0. Appointment of Secretary.
Move appointment of Dr. Navarro as the official Secretary of the Board.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Black. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I don't get a vote, huh?
Uh-uh.
Okay.
You can't vote.
Okay, all righty. Approve appointment of Assistant Secretary. Do we have nominations?
I move that the Deputy Superintendent, Chief Academic Officer, Assistant Superintendent, Chief Human Resources Officer, the Assistant Superintendent, Chief Operating Officer, and the Assistant Superintendent, Student Support Services, SELPA.
Second.
Be nominated, yes.
Okay.
Lot of assistants.
So, Ms. Matoye has moved, Mrs. Flor has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, approve the recommendation of Chief Negotiator. Do we have motion, now, do we have a nomination?
Move that Assistant Superintendent, Chief Human Resources Officer, Leoni Olson, be the Chief Negotiator. Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approve the designation of Management Personnel 2019.
Well, I think, kind of, I think it's kind of interesting that they decided that it's under the 2019 self-selection preferences, that they prefer to be called that.
Okay.
So, I recommend that, that the following individuals be designated Management Personnel, Superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents, Executive Directors/Coordinators, Administrative Intern, Principals, Elementary, Middle School, Intermediate, and High Schools, Assistant Principals, Middle, Intermediate, and High Schools, Classified, Chief Financial Officer, Chief Operating Officer, Communications and Public Relations Officer, Executive Director, Administrative Director, Directors, Assistant Directors, Coordinators, Financial Analyst, Facilities Analyst. And I'd like to add Directors to certificate it, 'cause it was written twice, but it wasn't spoken, so, Executive Directors and Directors and Coordinators, oh, sorry. That's okay. I amend your motion, and seconded.
Okay, so, moved by Ms. Flor, seconded by Ms. Matoye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, all right. Approve the schedule of Board Meetings 2019. Option one or option two?
Can we have Russell just speak to this briefly?
Absolutely. Mr. Lee Sung?
So, option one is the traditional second and fourth Tuesday of the month, as this district has done for many years. Option two is just an alternate proposal, which basically follows a three-week pattern, and I think the benefits of this, from a staff perspective, is people don't realize the enormous amount of time that people put in behind the scenes to generate our board meetings. But we also did a comparison with other districts and realized that our district met more than any other district in Orange County.
Yeah.
And so, that obviously is very important to our board, very important to our community, that we continue to have these board meetings in public, and to maintain the business that we need to conduct in our district. And this alternate schedule allows us to do that. We currently, as you know, meet twice a month, but sometimes, that's, mostly, it's two weeks in between meetings, sometimes, it is three weeks. With the alternate schedule, it's mostly three weeks. I've noticed that there's some in here that it's a two-week period of time in between. I noticed that there was one, one week, and I wasn't sure if that got amended at some earlier point, or if that's Where did we do that? An error, but that's
That's because of a religious holiday.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't quite sure what that was. But, but we do have various periods of time, and what's also unique about this is we've already pre-identified the times when we would have study sessions for the board, and this gives everyone an opportunity to explore deeply on a particular subject area.
And you've also looked at when the district would be the most busy and need the most approvals on contracts, and
Correct, yeah. So, a good example of that is June, for example, where we have to approve the budget, we have to approve the L cap, so, there's clearly two board meetings there for a particular reason.
Oh, I see the one week. It's a meeting and a study session that's one week apart. Is that the one you're talking about? January 15th and January 24th?
No, I was looking at March 19th to March 26th.
No, look at that.
That doesn't seem right.
And I wasn't sure why that, that one was just one week apart. I just, I just noticed that, right now.
Okay, come on, get your phones out. Why is that?
How many of these meetings have moved to a different Tuesday?
Spring break.
Couple of them have moved to a first and third Tuesday, I believe.
Well, April 8th is spring break.
Could we have also done this by reducing them when, on the less busy months, but keeping the busy months with two, done it the same way on the second and fourth? I just think we're so aligned to the second and fourth instead of every three weeks. I mean, it's pretty much the same. You have, there's a couple months, you only have one, and a couple months, we have two, but I'm thinking more, if we had, once we have two, have them on the second and fourth, and once we have one, have it on one of those two.
Twenty, yeah, the number of meetings are close, 24 and 21, I believe, between the two.
Yeah.
Right, but couldn't we just cut out the meetings from our current calendar? Is what I'm saying, so we're not meeting every, so it's not sometimes the third week, and some
I guess I don't, I think it's, it's good to have it different, because maybe sometimes, I can go to a city council meeting, or, you know, having it on the second and the fourth, I don't think it should really come into what is, what is the best time to have meetings. I think it's more important, they're three weeks apart whenever possible, so the staff has more time to prepare, and, oh, I have a lot of comments, and it's different. I know everybody, you've got that in your mind, second, fourth. I'm one of these people that don't.
I would like fewer meetings, but not, but maybe just take one of those away.
Why does it have to always be the second and the fourth?
Well, and can we alternate? Because it sounds to me like the City of Costa Mesa's are the first and the third, but City of Newport Beach are the second and fourth.
And it will.
So, it makes sense to alternate, like, one year, we're not on the same
Exactly.
As Costa Mesa, one year, we're not on the same city council.
Well, I would, I would say that throughout the year, it is alternated. It is not always on the second and the fourth. On option two. I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize Ashley Anderson, so you can finish, are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Flor?
Well, I think there are a couple of things, and I'm not opposed to cutting down the meetings, but I think that the second and fourth has sort of been it, and we've always, always also encouraged our, we've sent it out to the height, the schools, not to schedule items on that, so that, you know, that we were in conflict. If this is the case, now, we're asking our, you know, we're gonna have to publish this, they're gonna have to ask our, our staffs to go back and relook at their calendar, because the policy has always, I mean, forever, was, was to, to ensure that the greatest number of people could attend and wouldn't be conflict, so that there were very few times that there were things on the second and fourth Tuesdays. were things on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Now, if we switch, calendars have already been set for this year already. So I guess what I would make a suggestion is, is, I'm not opposed to taking a look. I think that we should be looking at this for the future, is that if it's going to be adopted, take a look at it for, starting in September, so that we can have the time to give the schools an opportunity to take a look at their schedule and have some further discussion, then look at two versus, Mrs. Yelsey's come up with an option of saying, well, let's, you know, let's take a look at the current one and see what we can do. So I'm just, I'm not opposed, but I think that rushing it, when all of a sudden we're telling, we're sending out to all the schools. And sometimes we have to, we have to accede to that. They've already established their calendars for this year.
If I may, I think that's a very valid concern and something that, when we were even thinking about this, I had inquired about that question, and the response I got back is that we're already informing schools, avoid Tuesdays altogether. And if they're gonna book things, stay away from Tuesdays because when we have events, when we have awards, they will always fall on the Tuesdays.
On the Tuesday. Ms. Matoye?
It's in our board policy or in our bylaws that the calendar is set for the organization, at the organization meeting in December, correct?
Yes.
Can't that be, can we change that? So that, I mean, if we had to, we could set our calendar right now through June, I mean, which would be there, but then if we want to discuss this, to me, this is the only calendar that doesn't parallel what the school calendar is. And so if we just continued the discussion to really look at it and worked on it so that when we started up back in July 1st, the new fiscal year, the new school year, we could do our whole calendar from July to July instead of, or to June rather than January to December. Is there a...
I don't think there's a problem.
A reason for that?
There's absolutely, there's absolutely nothing that prevents the board from having another agenda item in the future to reconsider the meeting calendar.
Great.
You can do that. And so that's within your purview. This is really up to the board to decide. I did wanna share that the reason for the three weeks was to provide more time for the research that staff needs to do in preparation for board meetings, because right now, every department runs a mock board agenda in between meetings. So they are doing a board agenda every week. So that was kind of the rationale for the three-week version, but something like that could be accomplished, like Mrs. Yelsey said, if you picked the month where you only did one meeting that month, and the next month was two meetings, and we worked our study sessions around that, that is something that we could do. But, you know, again, it's the board's meeting. It's just a recommendation that we had. We knew we were, and not all, not all because it was, it wasn't all self-imposed. There were a lot of things that happened last year that required us to have as many meetings as we had. But, you know, we just realized that we want to have you conduct your meetings in public, complete the items that need to be completed to make sure the business of the district continues, but at the same time, provide you with a calendar that's workable.
So let me make a motion that we set the organizational meeting for January 2019 through June 2019. It will be the regularly scheduled meetings, at which time in June sometime, we will bring this back for further discussion for July through December.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table by Mrs. Flohr to establish meetings from June until July? I mean, from January to June?
January to June.
January to June, under the current two per month. Is that correct, Ms. Flohr? Okay, so, and then come back in June and reconsider the rest of the year for the, so that's the motion. Okay, and that's a second by Ms. Anderson. Any discussion?
Yes, Ms. Matoye?
If we do that, I'd like to request that the two January meetings we have be delayed one week because we come back from school on January 7th. It's kind of a rush to get a January 8th meeting really fast, and we've done this in the past where we then would move January to be the 15th and the 29th.
Have we? I don't remember that.
Yeah, we've done that last...
Or maybe we just should have one meeting in January.
Exactly.
Well, we keep... Exactly. I mean, I had hoped everybody had already looked at this.
We did.
We did.
Okay, well, I don't understand why we need a whole nother meeting to discuss it then. I mean, if you've looked at it, I'm trying to understand what the issue is.
I think we're trying to come up with a compromise that meets your require, your needs for wanting to have less meetings, and also meeting the needs of what we've already published and the schools, the calendars at schools, as well as not being quite sure whether it's in the best interests of all of us to get our work done in public. So that was it. I mean, I'm absolutely fine with saying that we set one meeting in January, and it's January 15th. Does that work?
Ms. Anderson?
I agree. I think that because we've already set it's the middle of the school year, that's my rationale for reassessing it in June for the fiscal year, so then we can talk to the schools and hear what they say as well, and staff. And I'm fine having one meeting in January as well.
So I just want to clarify something. If you, you're gonna schedule, a decision that's made in June will be only for July through December, because you will have your organization meeting again in December again.
But we...
Yes. Uh-huh. Ms. Barto?
I just wanted to point out that the February 26th, March 26th meetings are the same on both calendars. There's quite a bit more overlap. I'm looking closely. It's not a huge difference between January and June, it's more the second half of the year.
Exactly.
So for that being said, it might be easier to just take option two.
Exactly.
Through July.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept.
We have a motion on the table.
On the floor, sweetheart. Okay.
I'd like to make an alternate motion.
We have to vote on the first motion.
And then I'll amend it to make it to June, instead of a June 8th, it's a January 5th, a January 8th, make it a January 15th meeting.
Just one meeting.
One meeting in January.
On the 15th. Okay, so you're amending your motion, oh, I'm sorry, I don't have to do this.
Yes, so you're, so there's, the motion is being amended to change the January meeting to January 15th. Eliminate the 22nd meeting.
Correct.
And is it okay, if you look at option two, we have a study session on the schedule for the 24th, I believe?
That's fine.
Which we need. So is that okay if we can maintain, can you keep that?
That's fine.
Okay, and so we will go twice per month between February through June, and then come back in June, and the board will revisit the rest of the schedule for the rest of the year.
Correct.
Is that, okay. So that's the motion on the table.
Right.
Do we have any more discussion? Are there any concerns? Okay. So Ms. Snell, what could we do to get us through?
I would like to approve. I would like to go with option two, and then if we find at the end of June, or whenever, before the summer, if we find that we're not liking the way it's going, or there's issues, we can revisit it. You can change the meetings, so we can revisit it. But I would like to get, I would like to get a schedule in place that the staff can rely on and know about at least more than one month in advance. And I think that we're not, it's like we're more concerned about that it's not on the second and the fourth, instead of what is best for the staff, which in turn is best for us, gives us the best information, and gives us these study sessions, which, we have discussed this before, study sessions are really important, and you don't have all the business at the study session, so you could actually focus on what you're listening to and what you're hearing. And I just think that's, you're not giving enough consideration to the people that are doing the work. And if it gets in the way of a few activities in the schools, you know, so be it. I don't think it will. It's not like we have tons of people that come here. And anyway, Ms., oh, I didn't know who was her.
Yes, Ms. Yelsey.
Ms. Yelsey.
Are you aware that in March, the meetings are a week apart?
Yeah, we have to, we'd have to look at that.
Talking about what you were talking about.
We'd have to look at that. I think there was some...
And there's still two meetings in May? That they've just been moved down or up?
Hmm.
Yes.
They're a week apart on option two? Or are they...
No, they're March 14th and March 28th, and now they're March 7th and the 21st. There's still two meetings in May.
Yeah, there are.
So they haven't changed.
That's an important month. Did you... Do they have another question, Ms. Yelsey? Or more to say?
No.
Okay, Ms. Black?
Yeah, I, we start off our year with, we have people already up in arms when we move their cheese and change our schedule in any way, shape, or form. So I really believe that we have the wherewithal to cancel meetings if we need to, and then, and then set a precedent, you know, in the future. So I don't, I really would like to see us just stay, you know, with the flow mainly because we do have students that come, and we do have a set already that's already, like, you know, Mrs. Flohr alluded to, and seriously alluded to. But I just, you know, we, there's no reason why we can't say, you know, next week's meeting, you know, we're going to cancel it, you know, and just see how it goes this year. But to move the whole thing, Ms. Snell, I think is, you know, kind of really moving everybody's...
Cheese.
Cheese.
Okay. Ms. Matoye?
If we go with the option of one meeting in January, with option one with one meeting, the exact same number of meetings occurring between January and June. There's, I count, there's 10. So from that aspect, we're having the same number of meetings.
You added the study sessions in?
I did not add in the study sessions.
But you canceled them.
But I'm, I would assume that we would be having study sessions no matter which calendar is there.
You can move your schedule. Well, until we get something.
Option one is 24 meetings without study sessions.
We didn't, I am not approving...
Option two is 17 meetings with four study sessions.
Again, I, as I alluded to in the beginning, I am not saying to do that, we're talking about 10 meetings. We're not talking about the whole year. We're talking about 10 meetings because this calendar's already been set. So everybody knows it, it's posted online, it's posted everywhere.
Well, it isn't yet.
It isn't yet, because we haven't set the meetings yet.
But everybody knows that normally it's the second and fourth. I'm gonna call for the question.
I like change.
Okay, so I would just like to let you know that we are willing to work with the will of the board, okay? And what we'd like to do is make sure that, so that everybody understands, this is a compromise motion by Mrs. Flohr.
Yes.
And that in June, we'll come back and look at this and reconsider what the rest of the year would be. The rationale is that we're ending a year, and there's nothing, and that schools will then have an idea of what to come back to. And yes, we tell them, no matter what, every Tuesday, don't plan anything.
Okay.
We do that.
Martha, it doesn't have to be till the end of that. We can do it one of our study sessions.
Yes, yes, yes.
Exactly.
So you can, we can bring this back anytime, but right now, the motion on the table is to bring it back in June.
Now, I know Martha called for the question. There's two people that would like to speak.
It's okay.
Okay, Ms. Anderson?
I agree with what Ms. Flohr said. I think we need to stick with what's set through June. That was what I was gonna...
Okay, Ms. Matoye?
And I just remembered that we talked that Mrs. Flohr amended her original thing to have only one meeting in January.
Yes.
So I just was confirming that if we vote on option one, it's...
January 15th.
Okay.
Okay, so call for the question. Okay, all in favor of the motion as stated with one meeting in January? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so six one.
Okay.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. One of the conversations that we had before we go on to the next assignments on committees is that there was discussion about spending a little more time to talk about these other committees, which are community committees that have requested board member participation. They're not mandated by law or statute that you attend as a board member. You're not necessarily assigned to them, but there are a lot of committees out there that would like board members to attend. And so the issue that we recommended was to spend some more time in January on discussing these in more detail, so that the board members could make a better informed decision about who would like to volunteer for which committee. So that's a board, that's a staff recommendation to the board. It's up to the board, though, if you want to continue and go through all of these, that's fine, too. So what is the will of the board?
I think it's a great idea to wait until we have a conversation. Wait until we have a conversation, yes, no?
Okay, so we'll postpone the rest of the committee meetings and do those in January, okay? And we'll spend a lot more time to get you more information between now and then, so you can have a robust discussion in January about them.
Okay.
We gotta at least know what you're signing up.
Okay, and with that, this is the adjournment of the organization meeting. We will take a five-minute recess. Okay, 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Was that Mr. Trader playing a joke on us?
Mr. Trader play a joke? Shocking.
Okay, so the organization meeting ends at 6:37. We will take a 10-minute break to reorganize the seats.
Do you need help?
Because this is letting me handle it.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
And our first order of business, I have a presentation to make, which means I'm going to be getting away from the microphone, so I will use playground voice and maybe it'll get picked up. But the board would like to thank our former, our past president, Mrs. Snell, so if you can come back over here, because I'm at least closer to some microphone.
I know, I thought that was pretty easy.
You thought you could get away. This is a beautiful plaque with a gavel on it, instead of actually getting a gavel, so she can't bang it. It doesn't work at home, I know, I've tried. In recognition of distinguished and devoted service as president, so this is the official fancy schmancy thing, there you go.
I love it, yes.
And then the board got together, and we decided to give you a little frou-frou gift. So if you'd like to open it, you might.
Do I?
Yes, nothing. It's openable.
I don't know if I would open it in public or not.
No, but you can open it.
She won't open it. Well, when you say frou-frou... Yeah, I know. Woo, that's very nice.
And I made sure it came with this.
She likes to write everything down.
Because you all were wearing pants.
Thank you, that's very nice. I love it. Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Okay, and I'll look at the card later.
Sure, it's all good. Because it's really a hard job.
It is. I'd like to say something, but I'm gonna go back to the...
All righty. You did get the bad chair.
I know, I told you, that's a bad chair.
So I just wanted to thank my comrades here and for all their support. When I took on president, I wasn't sure it was the right job for me. So I got a lot of mentoring from former presidents, and even though I didn't always take their advice, I really appreciated your support, yes. And I want to thank the cabinet for, you are the best of the best. You do so much for our kids, you're so professional, you know what you're talking about, and you are so supportive to the board in answering questions, and when we have questions, and questioning maybe how you're doing things, you're really professional about handling that, and it's wonderful. And as president, you get to work with the cabinet a little more closely, and I really appreciate it. And finally, I want to thank Superintendent Navarro. He is the best. You are the best. You, you're so knowledgeable. You're so open to change. You're so supportive. I had a couple of therapy sessions with him at the beginning and you were just a wonderful man and I respect you so much and thank you so much for being so supportive of me and, and I'm glad to be down here now. Thank you. And thanks to the community for being patient with me. And I wish you lots of luck and if you need any help, just, you have to come all the way down here.
Call the board.
No, don't ask. Ask Martha.
I know. If you see me with pads on, it's because Mrs. Flor's been poking me.
Thank you.
Okay. In most jobs, being president is like, I'd rather do that because it's, you can, you could just let everybody else. This is a different one, so that'll be exciting.
You started to say micromanage, didn't you?
I did, started to say micromanage.
But you can't do that now.
I can't do that at all. I couldn't do that then. All righty, we're going to start with our student board reports. Alex, you get to start.
Sounds good. Okay, so academically at CDM, our AP art history class recently had a field trip up to the Getty Villa in Malibu. And so we actually, we actually got a private tour by our AP art history teacher. And so it was just so cool because it was a Sunday morning, like everyone got up early and like drove up there to Malibu like as a class. And so it was just like a really great wholesome event because we got to like see all the Renaissance art and all the beautiful things they have up there firsthand. And then having our teacher giving us the actual like tour and telling us about it was so cool. And then athletically, our boys varsity wrestling team just competed in the modern day invitational this last weekend. And so they all did really well and each of the members got at least one win. So.
Oh, wow.
I don't wrestle, but I think that's something to be very proud of. And then they got third place overall. And so this last weekend, our vocal department also had their winter concert. And so they sang a lot of their holiday classics and just had a really good time. And then yesterday, something that's really cool is that a lot of our middle school students went up to the Long Beach VA Hospital. And so they got to actually participate in a holiday program for the veterans. And then I know something that was really cool is afterwards, they get to like interact and kind of talk to the veterans and just hear their life stories. And so I remember when I was in seventh grade, I went on that trip and it was just something I never forgot.
Yeah, right.
And then upcoming, our CDM holiday rally is going to be taking place this next Friday. And in my opinion, it's honestly the standout event on campus. It's like the thing I look most forward to every year. And so it's a little bittersweet for me, being my senior year, seeing the last holiday rally, but I think it's such an amazing event because it features people from cheer, winter sports, orchestis, ASV, and even our special needs program. And so they all dance in front of the school and like it's this insane program put on by our cheer like heads and our orchestis dance team heads. And it's just really cool. So, yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Isaiah.
So in terms of an academic update, this coming, or next Friday on the 21st, when we have our last government and econ classes with those, in those courses, so that's going to be a big shift for all of us at the school, switching over to an entirely new, entirely new class in the middle of the school year. And in incredible news, one of our seniors, Scarlett Contreras, just got a full ride to Stanford.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah. We were all freaking out, very understandably. So that's a huge deal and we're all super excited for her. And in terms of academics, our winter sports are going to be starting league soon. And tonight, our varsity girls basketball team will be playing at Orange High School.
Oh, wow.
And first update, thankfully, our school did not suffer the same downpour CDM in Newport Harbor. We only had some minor flooding. And right now, the choir and band room carpets are being dried as we speak. And on Thursday, our choir and bands are going to be performing the sounds of the season concert for the students here at our school in the theater, as well as for the students from Davis Elementary School. And then just this past Wednesday, we also had our songs of the season choir concert with Ms. Matoye was at, and we're all very excited to see her there. And I hope she liked it for one.
I loved it.
And upcoming events, this Friday is our Santa's Village, where all of our clubs are going to be selling various items to fundraise for future events. And next Wednesday will be our staff breakfast, for which our magical choir will have to be there at 6:50 in the morning to begin practice to perform at. You're all welcome to come. And that is all. Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Whenever athletic updates, our winter sports are all in a brilliant start. As a highlight, the pack the Gemini was just this Friday, well, last Friday. Our boys basketball plummeted Anaheim High School, which is a really good start. It got a lot of attention, free pizza, free shirts, and it was a good night. And then one of our recent events throughout the rainy day, the rainy day, our staff versus students indoor soccer match was highlighted by the teachers. They actually managed to handle the students. Until then, it came to the penalty kicks where they unfortunately lost, so the students won. It was a packed game. And our winter music concert is going to be this Friday at Costa Mesa High School at 7:00 PM. And as well, we're trying to motivate it more, promote it more by holding previews tomorrow. And our unique information is Axa Random Kindness Club is actually, throughout the rainy day, they ended up putting sticky notes all over the lockers as well as celebrating some of the teachers. The teachers are actually chosen by a raffle, like they just pick them out and then they, but besides the teachers, they also like show appreciation towards a staff member per each month.
Thank you, Jennifer. Rafael.
My printer wasn't working, so I have to hold a call.
Technology works.
Okay, no academic update, but I have a couple of recent events. Even with our severe flooding at Newport Harbor, where we had students basically swimming in the water, Newport Harbor still held their annual dancing with the staff the same day. So the event took place at seven. I was one of the two student judges on the board and it was super fun to do, seeing some of my teachers dance, something I would never have seen during school time.
I wanted to see Sean Bolton. Or Mr. Kusak.
Well, Mr. Kusak was, Mr. Bolton was pretty funny. The best part about it was seeing the winner. It was Lamar Security and he dethroned the, the two teachers who had won the previous two years. That was pretty awesome seeing it. I feel like he got a lot of the student votes because a lot of the students love Lamar. Stage Door, a play that had been going on for the past two weeks, ended this past Sunday with a lot of attendance and everyone, a lot of my friends who are part of the theater program really enjoyed being a part of Stage Door. And the auditions for the next play in, the spring play called In the Heights are already taking place. I think the singing audition was yesterday and the dancing audition is next week. In terms of athletics, Boys Varsity Basketball won the Tartan Classic Tournament this weekend against University High School. The score was 71-58. This one made our team have a nine-to-one winning streak ratio. And we're currently placed 16 in CIF Southern section. We have a game tomorrow, so hopefully we'll win. I'll be there, I take stats for the team. Some upcoming events, tomorrow, we're going to be hosting tours for students from private schools who want to come to Newport Harbor. And ASV will give, will be giving them a little bit of a rundown of what public school is like, so we can make that transition from private to public a lot smoother. Choir will be having their annual holidays at Harbor concert this Friday at the Robin Loads Theater. And the tickets are going to be $5 before the concert and $7 at the door. And we're going to be hosting a holiday week this last week of December for all the students. And that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Lucy.
For our academic update, we are proud to announce that every senior at Early College High School has submitted at least one college application as of November 30th. For our class of 2019, the average number of four-year university applications that were submitted was slightly more than our, sorry, slightly more than four per senior, which was a bit higher than last year's application amount. For our athletic update, we are having our alumni co-ed soccer game on Thursday, December 13th, so this week, at the Jack Hammitt Sports Complex, which is right next to Costa Mesa High School. As for our recent events, last week was a busy week for us as we had 15 US veterans speak with our students as part of the Living History Program on Monday. Spring after-school ROP course signups for our students occurred on Wednesday. Our last parent wellness seminar was conducted by, which is conducted by the OC Healthcare Agency, happened that Thursday evening. And on Friday, we had our senior sunrise in the morning, along with a 10th grade field trip to Cal State Fullerton later the day. And then the ninth graders also presented their environmental issues project at our environmental issues fair that evening at the Back Bay Interpretative Center. As for the rain, we only had minor flooding in our English classroom, which is very fun to see the water just slowly seeping in.
Oh, God.
But thanks to our very efficient sandbags and cones, we were fine at the end of the day. This week, we have our third annual winter guitar concert, which is tomorrow evening at 7:00 PR in our NPR, 7:00 PM in our NPR, sorry. We're all very excited. It's a very fun event and seeing all the students perform is very entertaining. The concert will, will feature our students who have been taking the Coastline Community College after-school guitar class this semester. And this week is also the week that all students will be taking their first semester college course final exams, which we're all very nervous for. Next week, all students will be compete, completing their first semester final exams and projects in their high school classes from December, December 17th to the 20th. And then our second semester begins January 14th. So we're all very excited. We're happy to announce that for the first time ever, we had students place in the Harbor Council PTA Reflections Contest. We had a total of five students representing five different categories. We ended up with two third-place recipients in dancing and literature, two second-place recipients in music and photography, and one first-place recipient in visual arts. That is all.
Excellent.
Congratulations.
Wow, thank you very much. And just to make sure Vance not, okay, sometimes he can sit somewhere else. Mrs. Link, Harbor Council PTA.
I'm so excited. Good evening, President Matoye. Board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet and guests. Our membership update, all of our schools, with the exception of one, got, received certificates from California State PTA for getting 30 members by October 30th, which is wonderful. Very excited about that. And I'm proud to say that our membership total is now up to 6,356.
That's amazing.
So we're getting there. And also, I want to congratulate Teewinkle Elementary School again for being our family engagement award winner. And they increased their membership by 20% from last June. So then they were, are awarded $250 towards a family engagement activity. So happy for them. We had, what, four other schools, five other schools that were in the running, too. So we're very pleased with that. And on to our parent education series, our third one is coming up tomorrow night at Newport Harbor High School in the gymnasium from 6:00 to 7:30. The speaker will, the topic is bullying awareness and prevention. And Shanday, our speaker, our, is, Shanday Por Keshif is a founder of Ability Awareness Project, and it's a Laguna Beach nonprofit that provides bullying prevention and education for the children and the parents. So I think this is going to be a really, really positive one to, to go and see. I hope to see you there. And reflections, as we heard, reflections. There's one, one kid going on to, from, from early, early college, right? Early college, yeah, we're excited about that. So Fourth District Reflection Art Gallery is Saturday, January 26th from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock. It's an open house at the Orange County Department of Ed D building. This is to recognize the students whose entries are advancing to Fourth District. And the entries will be, that will be advancing from Fourth District are going to be printed in the program, so they go on to California State PTA. And also, I wanted to speak about Sacramento Safari. Sacramento Safari is coming up on February 25th and 26th. This will be my second time going and, and it's very, very interesting. I think the first time I went, I wasn't really totally prepared on everything about doing research and really what it was all about, but I'm excited to go this year. There will be keynote speakers on issues that affect our children and youth, and we learn about all the inner workings of, of government. And registration is now open and we encourage school board members to join us. If you want a flyer on that, I have that. And, you know, the Fourth District also sent me a, a little flyer as far as, it says, why invite your school board trustees or your school district superintendents to Sacramento Safari? And they gave four good reasons to it. It's a great way for the, for you guys to experience interactions with elected legislators and education decision-makers from a PTA perspective and to learn how PTA educates its members by who we have speak with us in our discussions, share our PTA priorities and how we present these to our elected officials. And finally, how we invite them to, how to, oh, it tells me, how to invite you and how you pay for your trip. It's to remind you that you have a budget, that you can budget to pay for the trip. That's what it was telling me to. So I hope you guys can join, or if you can join me up there, it's, it's going to be a fun time, just a really quick trip, a one-night stay. So if you find it, I'd love to, love to see you up there, okay? Thank you.
Mrs. Snell.
I was just going to piggyback on that. I did, I went to Sacramento Safari several times when I was in PTA. And it is fabulous, the, the way it's put together, the speakers, you have great speakers that come in. And so when I got on the board, I was interested in legislation. I went, unfortunately, was on the same, let's see, I, I went for the first day, but the second day, I had to fly home to go to the meeting. It was on a Tuesday, first, second Tuesday or something. Anyway. Anyway. Anyway, I would, yes, and I'm glad you've changed your rules because when I went, they wouldn't let me go as, as a school board member. I had to go to a PTA at one of my schools and they had to vote that I could go. So I'm glad that you're loosening that up.
Opening to school board members, yeah. You know what, it's fantastic. It's intimidating at first, you know, with going into the legislator's office and all this. And, you know, it's, you know, we have our little group ahead of time, so we know what we're going to say and everything like that. But I'm so impressed with how much of a big voice PTA has.
Absolutely.
Advocacy. To get these things passed.
And it's so, it's so educational. The first day is just educational and just all these speakers. Second day, yeah, in the morning, they have more speakers and, I mean, you, you go from, you know.
Oh, yeah. Come home and rest.
And I used to go with Judy Franco. She was always there. Ms. Franco, yeah. Anyway, thanks for the invitation. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a report on school site security improvements. Mr. Holcomb.
Thank you, President Matoye and board. Let me make sure we can bring this up here. Thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on the work we've been doing regarding school security and safety. First, I'd like to start with a little bit of a background. As, as many of you know, since 2013, this district under this board's leadership has been continually looking at security enhancements at our schools. And we've made enhancements at seven sites, most recently completing two this summer at Mariners and Newport Heights. As well as that, this year, earlier this year, we comprehensively studied all of our sites to determine whether or not to continue to make further security enhancements. So in essence, we had completed the last charge and looked at what's next. As we did, we brought on a security consultant, Mr. Vlad Anderson, who is a former SRO in our district with the Newport Beach Police Department and an architect this time for our study. time for our study. And one of the things that we really focused on was an international, uh, concept called SEPTED. And, uh, SEPTED really addresses the issues of, uh, law enforcement's perspective. Actually, I'm sorry, I was in my head, I was a slide ahead, but let me first talk about law enforcement's perspective. Uh, for a criminal act to occur, uh, law enforcement, uh, has this crime prevention triangle that says, first, the, the perpetrator has to have the desire to commit the crime. They have to have the knowledge or the ability to commit the crime, and they have to have an opportunity to commit the crime. Now, of those three things, the, the one that's most difficult to affect in general is desire. Um, that's really mostly internal to the person. And, um, so, uh, but here at the district, you have, especially this last year, really committed to some work with our own people to address this issue with regard to, uh, student supports, for our students to address, uh, their concerns, what's going on, mental health. Uh, also, the Challenge Success Program was kicked off at the Corona Del Mar High School, and, and a number of other community supports, where we're, we're addressing the desire issue, uh, within the district. Of course, we can't address outsiders' desires. But what we can do is we can address the ability and opportunity, uh, both internally, uh, and externally. And that can be deterred through environmental design. And there's this international movement, as I mentioned, called Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And they really focus on three primary aspects. The first is natural surveillance. The ability to see what's going on outside of your secure perimeter, so that you can see what, what might be coming toward you, what's going on around outside. The next is the access control, the ability to control who's actually on your property or, or on your site. And then, the, the last one is territorial reinforcement, so that people know when they're on your site, really making it clear to them where the public space ends and where you get to start enforcing your rules. The other thing we talked a lot about is, uh, in respect to all of this, is there's two basic approaches to how to address this. One is to approach it through a passive solution, the other is through an active solution. A passive solution is to limit access, uh, to our students and staff on our sites, or access to our site is eliminated by a physical barrier. For example, fences and walls. Um, you know, you, many of us know the stories, or we see it on TV, about how policemen, when they sit in a restaurant, will sit with their back to a corner so that they're facing the door, because that area behind them, they know there's nobody gonna come through there, right? So a perfect example of one of our schools that was just done recently was Newport Harbor High School at the corner of 16th and Irvine. It's completely passive. There's a 10-foot-high chain-link fence with 1-inch chain-link, uh, extremely difficult to get over, so it's very passive. You don't need to worry that somebody's going to be entering onto the site from that location. One of the, uh, so, it's 100% secure, you don't have to do anything, it stays 100% secure all the time, um, and it's a one-time cost. You, you pay for it once, it provides that security. Active solutions, uh, the access to our students and staff or our sites is limited by some personnel action. Examples of that are our security staff, uh, which we have security staff at all of our sites, uh, and things like doors and gates. And so, you see, at the same high school just down the road on 16th Street here, you see where we have both the vehicle gates into the parking lot and a pedestrian gate, which happens to be open in this particular, uh, situation. And so, the important thing to think about is, even though this is a fence, it still is an active solution, because it requires personnel actions to actually be 100% secure. The gate has to be closed, the gate has to be locked. So there's always some level of ongoing cost to this, to make sure that security is provided. So with SEPTED, uh, and the best way to use SEPTED on our sites, we looked at it from this perspective, maximizing our passive solutions. Wherever possible, fencing at the perimeter of our property, uh, dictating, this is our property, the rules change when you're inside of this fence. Uh, also minimizing active solutions, so we would minimize the total numbers of entries on site, because that's one less entry, you have to send someone around to check to make sure it's secure, uh, and so on. And then, the last thing is to maximize the use of technology to support those active solutions. So how can we help, where we do need active solutions, to use technology to make it easier for us and, and more cost-effective for us to do that type of thing? And some of the things that, uh, we looked at was providing electronic locks at all perimeter entries. That way, you know not only when the lock was opened, but what key used it. Instead of one universal master key, uh, very much like hotel locks or those types of things, you know who opened it, which key it was that opened. So that's one of the things that we've recommended there. And then, the other is to provide camera surveillance of all the perimeter entries, because knowing that the gate was opened by this particular key at this particular time doesn't tell you why, two hours later, the gate is open. What it tells you is that it was opened at that time, you don't know, uh, for sure that that person closed it, you know, or when it got closed, or who might have come through it, et cetera. So that helps us to see, uh, whether or not the entry has been, uh, closed, or is being propped open, or something like that. Then we also looked at the impacts to all of the sites, and, uh, I've put a, a bullet list here of some of the types of things that would be necessary, uh, at our site, some of the impacts. One of those, we've already experienced with the elementary schools that we've been doing over the last five years, and that is reconfiguring public entry interfaces and administration buildings. Perfect examples of that are Newport Heights and Mariners, where we needed to move the reception portion of the administration building up to the portion of the building closest to the street, so that it could be outside of the fence, so there's an entry for the public to interface with the staff at the counter, and that would be, uh, outside of the secure perimeter for the site. So those are the types of things that, that we will need to address at a, a lot of our sites as we continue. Improved, uh, drop-up, uh, drop-off and pickup. So, uh, if we, uh, adopt these principles, and we use less places, uh, for entry, it provides a whole lot of great benefits, but we have to make sure that all of those, uh, interactions, everybody who's coming and going can do so very efficiently. And that will require some of our sites to enhance our pickup and drop-off. Improved parking, because, uh, the parking needs to be close to the entries. Securing vehicle entries for emergency and maintenance only, so that the only vehicles that are on our site are vehicles that need to be there, uh, for a very specific purpose. Clearer boundaries with adjacent public spaces. As you know, we have a number of schools that are immediately adjacent to parks, uh, where our property line and the park's property line is not immediately apparent, uh, with the fencing that's there. So that question of, when do we get to implement rules and when don't we? And what is our active security method of having, uh, staff supervision of our students when they're out, uh, at recess at that space? Those are all the types of things we will need to look at more. Uh, and then, the last one is that we will need to continue to sep- to look at separating non-K-12, uh, types of uses. Uh, we have preschools, uh, at many, many of our campuses. Some of those preschools are located in the middle of the campus. Parents have to walk their child all the way to the preschool, sign off on the clipboard, and then walk back out. That means there's one more person who's in the middle of our campus. So looking at those types of issues. Uh, we have leases with some people who operate, uh, facilities on our campuses, making sure we have those properly separated. So with that said, um, we went through all of those, and the first two schools that made sense to address next, uh, you'll see on your consent calendar, we have, uh, recommended item for you to approve a contract with the architect to complete designs for these, uh, two schools. The first one is Enson Intermediate School. And so, what you see in this, uh, slide with Enson Intermediate School is that down at the bottom, uh, we do need to improve drop-off for that school significantly, and parking. Uh, there are, right now, 37 parking stalls on the site that has, uh, 80 approximately staff. So they're currently parking up and down the street, uh, in this neighborhood. Um, we've identified a place for, uh, a new, another new part, two parking lots, uh, on campus, and then, uh, fencing around the campus. Uh, it will need a reconfigured public entry, uh, and administration area, so that folks can come into the office, to the counter, without being, uh, having access to the complete site. Um, these, this school would be designed with electronic locks at all perimeter entries, uh, as our first school, uh, in that direction, and, uh, will provide for cameter sur- camera surveillance of all of those perimeter entries. So to give you a sense of, of what this will look like, at each one of, uh, our recommendation has been that, at each one of these schools, at the, um, at the end, at the primary entrance, uh, of the school, we would have an ornamental type of fencing, and then, as we're out in the playfields and the surrounding area, it would have, uh, chain-link fencing only. Instead of the chain-link fencing we've had for decades, uh, that kids can climb, it's the 1-inch mesh that you've seen at Newport Harbor around the Davidson Field Complex. So here are some renderings from the architect about, uh, the type of look that it will provide. It provides, uh, a very, um, collegial look with the columns. Uh, there's really an opportunity at Enson to, uh, spruce up the school. We didn't go so far as to update painting schemes and those kinds of things, but those are some of the types of things that may be able to have. This school will be getting air conditioning, uh, next year as well. So, there's really an opportunity at these schools as we introduce the security measures to improve the look. As, if I go back a slide, you'll see this new parking along, um, Cliff Drive, uh, is fairly tight up against the buildings. In order to both, uh, preserve the softness of that, uh, area, uh, and to keep from having our fences create an ability to climb onto the buildings, which historically, by the way, is a significant issue of all fences, especially when they bump into close buildings. We, we're trying to keep them as far away as possible. But in that case, we really can't. So, what, uh, it's hard to see in this, but in that slide on the left-hand side, where you see the front of the school, just to the right of the flagpoles, uh, you see the fence going down there, and those are act- that's actually a vine growing up on a trellis up above all of that area to soften the space, but that also, the part that the vine grows on, that, that sticks out toward the street, keeps somebody from climbing up onto the, the building. So it's all designed with those types of things in mind. The other school is the Corona Del Mar Middle and High School. As you know, uh, at that school, we're currently design, in, in design and getting ready to construct this next summer, uh, replacement, uh, track and, uh, field in the current track and field location, and create a new artificial track, uh, in the open field space. As we do that, the standard has been to provide a 10-foot-high, uh, fence around those, so that was already going to get fencing. Now, we'll be able to continue the fencing around. And what you see on this one, it's easier to see, the light blue, uh, fencing is all the chain-link fencing, and then, the orange dotted line, uh, that goes from basically the baseball diamond, or from the, the enclave, the middle school enclave, uh, around on, uh, Mar Vista over to East Bluff, and then up East Bluff to the tennis courts, that's all an ornamental style of fence. And that looks like this.
Is, is that 10 feet high too?
Actually, so, all of, uh, what we, we studied that quite a bit, and, um, but the difference between our current 6-foot-high fence, lots of folks can, can find a way to get over a 6-foot-high fence. 10-foot-high fence, really, really hard to get over, but it's really, really tall. And so, our recommendation is an 8-foot-high fence, uh, everywhere except for around the, uh, artificial turf fields, which we're still doing our 10-foot-high fence that we have. So you'll see that, um, there's, some of the, the entry gets reconfigured, the parking lot, in the student parking lot, create a, a more efficient drop-off zone there, some of the types of things. And then you see the areas where it's a little bit brighter green. Now that those areas will be behind a fence, there's opportunities to create outdoor learning areas. And many of you who've been to CDM, actually, this one that's kind of in the lower right-hand corner, uh, down here, is already, it's just beautiful, it's just gorgeous. But it's outside the secure perimeter, so teachers can't really take their classes out there and be secure to conduct, uh, a lesson, whereas now that they'll be behind the fence, they'll be able to use those. So, uh, as we did that, there's also an area by the art buildings that can be converted to that type of space, as well as, uh, over on East Bluff Drive by the bus drop-off, uh, that area will also be able to be created to a place where it can be for more outdoor learning types of environments. So those are the two projects, uh, that are before you with the architect agreement, and, uh, there's the, the other renderings, if anybody wants. I'll go back, just in case anybody wants to look at that and take your questions if you have any.
So, the parking lots will be open, correct?
Yes, that's a, a very good question, Mrs. For, um, at this point, uh, we are not, uh, but this, this project as designed does not plan to change the ability for people to enter our parking lots. We did a lot of studying on that question of parking lots, uh, with regard to, uh, there is no way to keep pedestrians out of parking lots. So we knew that the secure perimeter could never, the parking lots could never be inside of the secure perimeter, because once the gate opens, no matter what type of gate it is, even if it was a rolling 8-foot-high gate, you walk in behind a car, you're in. So, if that's the case, we need the secure perimeter to be behind that. Parking lot, we have to acknowledge pedestrians may get in. We do believe that it makes sense to consider the option of restricting, uh, entry into our parking lots for vehicles, uh, because there's a lot of things that come along, uh, with, um, people entering our, our parking lots with vehicles. But, um, we, we just know that trying to keep pedestrians out of parking lots is not something that's efficient or effective to do.
Mrs. Snell.
Just a couple of questions. So what is the next step for these projects? When I, now that we're gonna, gonna approve the contract, if we approve the contract? Um, when, does it have to, does it have to go through CEQA? Does it have to go through anything else? When can we start doing it?
Yeah, a very good question. Um, these projects will be, uh, starting in design. We will be working with the environmental, uh, consultant to evaluate, uh, whether or not they can, uh, obtain a negative declaration, because they're basically replacements of, uh, existing, uh, capa- fencing and things like that on our sites. Uh, so each one of those will have to be done, uh, for each of the two schools. We will continue with, presuming you approve this tonight. The architect will, uh, then start some meetings with, uh, some of, we have some consultants ready to go, but those folks will then start to work, uh, more closely with the school sites, and we will have community meetings per your policy. Um, in, I should tell you, I, I should have told you before, that, uh, we have had extensive meetings with the principals, uh, at both sites, and, and the assistant principal, uh, the assistant principals at Corona Del Mar High School. And, uh, as we've had those conversations with them, uh, we've learned a lot, and, uh, they both support, uh, these plans, um, fully, uh, as they're currently designed. So, we'll just keep taking that next step and getting those, uh, reviews with, with the people that are affected, and then, our goal is to start construction this summer. Now, these are not projects that can get done in the 10 weeks of summer. So we will have to be phasing them and thinking through those details, uh, but, uh, that's the plan.
Especially with Enson, 'cause they're going to be...
With air conditioning.
They're gonna be doing a whole bunch of stuff.
And the parking lots, it, it's going to be very significant.
It's gonna be, okay. So you're hoping to be able to start this, same, what about Corona Del Mar, same?
Both of them, we hope to start this summer.
Okay, a lot going on there too. Okay, good.
Mrs. Bartow.
Um, yes, can you walk us through how, uh, you've planned for pedestrian traffic? It's pretty, it's a pretty big change for Enson to have one entry point, one exit point?
Sure, excellent. So, um, it's, it's... So it's, it's really fascinating these days to, as we all see with what computers can do, but I have done this before in planning new schools where the civil engineers can use a computer program where you can actually watch little dots walk down the street, ride little dot bikes down the street, cars queuing up on the streets and, you know, coming in the parking lot, going out of the parking lot. It's really amazing what that can do. And so with these projects, because of that significant impact, this is, this is not a normal part of the service, so we've increased the budget to provide for that level of simulation so that we can go through and we can see all of that happening. And if we need to make a change, we'll make a change. As I mentioned, I've done this with new schools and when we did, the developer didn't believe that cars were gonna back up and we said, yes, they're gonna back up. And when they saw the simulation, they said, ah, we'll add some more lanes and a roundabout. So those are the types of changes that we could make if we see that during simulations.
Mrs. Floor.
So where is the primary, can you go back to the Ensign and show us the exact, the, where is the primary, where's the primary exit going to be?
So I, I didn't think to bring my laser pointer, this one doesn't work, but there's Sarah Hallebe, right there. So where you see that, what, right where Sarah's finger is, a little to the right, up, up, right there, that's the administration building right there.
Thank you, Dana.
That's, that's the primary entry for the Ensign School. And what you see is that there's a new sidewalk that's being created to the west in between the parking lot and the campus. And part of the reason for that is because there are a lot of students at this school and so there will be a collector coming down the parking lot sidewalk and exiting through a set of gates there on the left-hand side of that funnel. There's the, the main throughway that's currently in the breezeway, leading straight back from the entry toward the reading court, where it says reading courtyard. And then to the right, you could turn right and go through a set of gates and go down on the school side of that parking lot fence. So you could go all the way down that front hallway and then branch off to either of the two classrooms. And this was to allow for, you know, students to come from three complete different directions, have complete, three complete different gates in order to make that flow work more efficiently.
So when you say that there's different gates, when, when we're going for a single point of entry, that's when the bell rings and school starts, then there will be only one point of entry, but sometimes you'll have two or three opportunities before school starts and at the end of the.
The objective is to have every person who enters the campus, enter the campus in the same place. Nice thing is the camp, it's easy, you don't have to put a whole lot of cameras. So remember I was talking about assisting the active, it's a whole lot cheaper to assist the active with less cameras than more cameras, right? So that's one advantage and it's less for somebody to have to monitor, et cetera, et cetera. That's one thing. But the other one is all three of those gates are within visual eyesight of the administration building. So actually, once the first bell rings, all three of those gates will lock and they won't be open again because you will go into the office. So the door to the office will also, in essence, become like a fourth gate, so you'll have three, three big gates that people come in and out of and then you can go in the office and you'll go through that main door. Does that make sense, Mrs. Floor?
Yeah, so I'm just talking, thinking about the kids that are, the bikes. So the kids who are riding bikes will enter right off of Irvine Avenue right there or will they have to go all the way to the very front of the school, right up to the front and then da, then enter in? So, so is there going to be a walkway or something other than pedestrian entering for the bikers who are gonna be walking their, we don't want them riding their bike down that.
That's right.
So will there be a, a separate pathway for the bikers to park, go into the campus to park their bike?
So, so right now, so right now, all three, all three of those gates are about 30% larger in width tha, and that collection is 30% larger than is necessary for the number of people who could potentially go through it. That's if nobody stayed for after-school programs and everybody left at exactly the same time, it's, the, that opening is already 30% larger. So we believe when we do the simulation, it's all going to look really, really great. But one of the things that we've talked about and one of the reasons why we widened the, the new sidewalk on the west side between the parking lot is so that there's plenty of room for students to walk their bikes that direction over there and straight back through the breezeway to the, to the bike parking location. So Principal Shaka and our team have talked significantly about that and it will be one of the things we're really looking at in the simulation.
Okay, and so when they leave, will they have to do the same thing?
Same thing.
Walk back and come back up?
Yes, yes. There is, by the way, as you may know, at Irvine, and I don't know what that next street is there, but that, where you see the turns into the parking lot, is a very significant concern both by site administrators and the city with regard to, and, and so it's one of the things we've really said, we do not want students exiting there for safety reasons. It's.
It's horrible.
It's, it's not, it's just not really well-designed for that. Now, in the meantime, I should, I should tell you that the, at, at this school, over Christmas break, the city is going to be changing of its own planning, some of the signage with regard to parking and, and drop-off along Cliff and around the school. They have asked us, and we are going to move the current exit for the bike enclosure that's at the corner of Coral and Irvine, up Coral by about 15 to 20 feet instead of having it exit right on the corner. That was a request that they made that we said, you know, eventually it won't be necessary, but as a temporary, to try to help again with keeping our kids safe as they're exiting from school, we'll be doing that over Christmas break.
Any other board comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Informational items, Dr. Navarro.
Yes, I just wanted to really thank the board for your participation in the conference. It's California School Boards Conference and come back with some pragmatic ideas. And I know that later on, there'll be some discussion about how comments have been rearranged, also just the structure of the agenda and how it's been designed. So I think those are some of the hidden little gems that we walked away with, not only by board members, but also, you know, staff at the same time. And it's been a nice collaboration and I want to thank our two new board members for, you know, making the arrangements to, to join us at the last minute. I think I called them a week before we were gonna head out and they were gracious enough to change their, their plans and, and join us and we really enjoyed having that time. And I just want to say dinners were fun and great, so I appreciate that, getting to know everybody that way. But I just want the public to realize that that's a really good investment. There are so many, so many sessions where you can learn so much and you hear about great things that are going on in other districts and you can also say, oh, we're doing a lot of those things, so it feels good. And, and it was, you know, being gone for five, four or five days is a great sacrifice. I know that Mrs. Black was making deals on the phone with her real estate business and in-between sessions, so I appreciate her sacrificing that time, but thank you for that and thank you for all the great conversations that we had.
Okay, community input on action items.
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on action items. Consent calendar, resolution consent calendar, discussion action calendar per Board Policy 9323. Each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not see unused minutes to other speakers and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comment per item. The board consent, with board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. Depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak, the board, staff or members of the public may request that a specific item on consent be moved to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the board takes action on consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the record.
And we have no cards?
Hmm, and you made me read that?
Well, because I didn't hear we had no cards until after you got started and since we.
I'm getting my voice back, so.
Well, since it was a change too, it was good for everyone to hear that.
I'm kidding you, I'm giving you a hard time, sorry.
That's okay.
Move adoption of the consent calendar.
Oops, we have a super. Never mind. Second.
Okay, second.
No discussion, hearing? Oh, that's right. Mrs. Floor moved and, who seconded? Mrs. Yelsey seconded the motion to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Excellent, thank you.
So. Now comes the fun part of the evening.
Discussion action.
I want to see how many students we lose on this one.
I know. Our next item is to accept financial audit reports for the fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Trader and the auditors, doesn't that sound like a group? It's Jeff Trader and the auditors.
I'd like to introduce to you your auditor and I can't emphasize that enough because he, your audit firm reports directly to you. And so there's no, no, even though the Business Services Division interfaces a lot with your auditors, they report directly to you. So this is Kirtan Shaw with Vavernik Trynanday and he has the audit report for the 17-18 year and, and we'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the 17-18 fiscal year audit report. So today I'm gonna presenting two reports, the district audit report and the Measure F bond audit report. Does everyone have a copy of the reports?
Do we have it online?
Online.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, it's online.
That's right, it's online.
So with the district report, we, there is also a communication letter. This letter is used to directly communicate the results of the audit to the governing board, which is you. The letter provides summarized results of the audit, including topics such as significant accounting policies, accounting estimates, corrected or uncorrected misstatements and audit findings. And there's two things that the letter includes that the audit report does not, are problems encountered during the audit and whether there were any disagreements with the management during the audit. And I'm happy to report we did not encounter either.
Yay!
So moving on to the district audit report, we provide assurances in opinions. So we have four opinions on the district report. I'd like to start with the first opinion on page two. This is the financial statement opinion and this is purely on the numbers. And if you turn to page three, the first paragraph, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." Those are the magic words, I guess. That means we give unmodified opinion, which is the highest assurance we can give for a clean opinion. There's another page before we move on to the three, the other three opinions. If you turn to page 18 of the report, it's titled Statement of Net Position. At the bottom, you'll see a total net position amount of negative $144 million. Now, somebody might look at that and say, is the district even solvent? Well, they are. The reason it's big negative number is because the way assets and liabilities are required to be reported under governmental auditing standards. So I guess the easiest way I can explain is when you have a, when you buy a house and you have a mortgage, let's say it's $500,000. Well, just because you don't have $500,000 to pay, doesn't mean you're bankrupt. As long as you can pay your bills every month, mortgage, good. So that's the same situation here.
Took a way of putting it.
And also, we also implemented Gatsby 75 this year, which will loan your liability for other post-employment benefits by about $30 million. Because before, in Gatsby 45, we broke down the liability in 30 pieces for 30 years and then we were recognizing it each year. Well, Gatsby 75 came along and said, no, you recognize all at once, so which increased the number even higher or lower, I guess, if you count the other way. Now, moving on to page 107, which is the summary of auditor's results. This is where we talk about the other three opinions. Now, this one is also a financial statement opinion, but this one is purely our internal controls. So the checks and balances implemented by the management to make sure the numbers are accurate. And our opinion was unmodified, which is again, the clean opinion. We had no material weaknesses and no significant deficiency reported. Next one is federal awards. Again, our opinion was unmodified, material weaknesses were not identified and there were no significant deficiency reported.
Yay!
And we tested two federal programs this year, child nutrition and medical assistance program. The next one is state awards. Again, our opinion was unmodified except for the following two programs, attendance and middle or early college high schools. And we have the details of the findings in the back.
I don't remember why.
Starting at page 110. Any questions, comments that I can address?
Can I ask for the public's, if, if Mr. Lee Sung, would you explain why the attendance is a question at early college high school? Because everyone would go, what? It's so, it's a perfect school, why is that happening?
Right, I'd be happy to. And this was an issue that was brought to our attention a couple of years ago. It actually is something to the credit of our students who attend early college high school and they complete a lot of their high school graduation requirements well in advance. And as we know with early college, they are taking college courses while they're still in high school. So they are not meeting the state minimum instructional minute requirement per day because on some days, they're actually taking more college classes than the minimum number of minutes they need to be in a high school course. So Dave Martinez, the principal there, is aware of it, doing the best that he can, working with the community college and the college professors that are on campus to balance the schedule so they at least meet the minimum requirement of high school minutes per day. In some cases with kids who are excelling, they don't meet that minimum.
It's a, it's a good problem to have.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Any more questions about the district report?
That's really good, not bad.
All right, let's move on to the Measure F audit report. And here we have two different opinions. First one is on financial statements on page two. Again, if you turn to page three, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects." So it's a unmodified opinion. And this year, district also issued a Geo bond and a refunding bond to refund prior Geo bonds to save some money on the issuances from prior years. And if you move on to all the way in the back where it says performance audit.
What page?
It's also, it's actually page one, but it's in the back.
Okay, one?
Yes.
Yeah.
It'll say independent auditors report on compliance or performance, actually. So along with the financial statement reporting, we're also required to look at the expenditures and see if they were in compliance with the water approved measure. And I'm happy to report that the expenditures we tested, which if you look at page three, we tested 100% of the expenditures in this case, were all in compliance with the water approved measure.
Yay!
So again, it's a unmodified, clean opinion. Any questions on Measure F report?
Questions? Okay, we need a motion and a second to accept financial reports. Can we do them together? Yes, we can, since I've heard no rejection to that. Do we have a motion?
I think it's important for the public to know that because the auditors actually report directly to the board. And as a result, Vavernik Trynanday. And as a result, Vavernik Trinan Day, any auditor that we have engaged in mailed the audit reports directly to our house, and so that there is a complete separation of that information.
They got emailed electronically.
And then, could you explain the, the cycle? Because I know that we've used Vavernik Trinan Day for a number of, number of years, and they've been performed outstanding, but we do change. Can you talk about that a little bit, just for the public to understand?
That's a great issue to bring up. You know, it's, it's really important that the auditors remain independent. And so, you know, as, as, as you work, of course, if you work with people, you become familiar with people, that kind of thing, we want to make sure that there's, that independence is maintained. And so, we have to either switch accounting firm, or I'm sorry, switch audit firms on occasion, or switch the auditor, the auditor that's in, in charge of the audit. And I believe, is Kirtan still here? Is that every, I want to say it's every five years.
Very, six years, yes.
Six years. So it's every, every six years that we have to switch partners who is in charge of the audit here at the district. And we've been very pleased with how Vavernik Trinan Day, they're super thorough, that kind of thing. So we haven't really had a need to go out and, and look at other auditors, but we have switched partners according to that schedule.
Great. So we either change people, or we change firms?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Flor moved.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, look at that Christmas tree. Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Anderson.
So does this then go back to the Citizens Oversight Committee? What is the next step?
For Measure F.
For the Measure F piece?
Yes, because they, I mean, they're still meeting occasionally, right? Do we set a date for the next Citizen Oversight Committee so they get this finding as well? Or it's just public information?
Yes, the Citizens Oversight Committee met about a month ago, and they set their calendar for next year, so they will be receiving their portion of the report at their next meeting.
Okay.
Mrs. Black?
I forgot why it was.
I understand that. There were three.
Oh, no, I wanted to let the public know also that because it is, you know, the board's audit, that the president of the board actually meets with the auditors, and they go through any findings and the process, and, and that happens. You'll get to do that this year.
Yay!
Yeah, and so it's really nice to be able to, you know, have that opportunity to, you know, look at.
It, it is interesting, the first time I received the audit package, and it was like to us at home, not to the board. It's fascinating. So do I have a motion? Yes, there was.
I thought you made a motion.
Mrs. Flor moved it.
Dana seconded.
Blacks, Mrs. Blacks seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Yay, we've accepted our audit findings. Thank you.
Thank you.
More fun just around the corner. Mr. Trader, would you discuss with us the fact, because you would like us to approve the first interim report? More fun, more math fun.
Not going to get it, don't worry. I waited four years to get it.
Okay. Well, President, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, guests, it's really good to be here with you tonight. I'll make this as painless as possible. But let's, let's go ahead and talk about the first interim. And so first of all, we need to know what it is. And the first interim, it really is, it's required by law, required by ed code and government code that we come and report to you about first interim. There we go.
And there it is now.
I could see it, but obviously no one. So it includes the budget revisions between our adopted budget that we do in June and first interim, which happens to be October 31st. And so that accounts for all transactions between July and October 31st. And it includes multi-year forecasts, and it is also certifying our ability to financially meet our obligations for the next two years. So that's what it is, and this is the reporting cycle that we're on. We have our state adoption, our, I say the state, our, our budget adoption in July, we have our unaudited actuals in September, and here we are at our first interim. And the things that are coming up now, then we'll have the governor's budget will be released in January, and that will be interesting because we're now, we'll now have a different governor, and so we'll see what happens with that. And then we'll have our second interim report in March, and then we'll bring to you our, again, a budget adoption in June. And so let's talk about district revenues. And the one thing to remember about district revenues is, is we are a community-funded district. That's very different than other normal, how do you say, local control-funded districts. And so we're going to spend some time talking about what impacts that tonight. And so when we talk about revenues, property taxes have really been driving the growth in revenues. And, and so when you look at this line here, that's our total revenue line, and that's a nice line. Look at that, how nice. It's, it's kind of a little flat in 16, 15, 16, 16, 17, but it's kind of up and to the right, and that's good growth, and that's what we like to see. But when you look at here, this is what's really driving it. This is our, actually our property tax line, our, our local control funding formula, property taxes. That's what's driving it, because when you look at federal dollars, completely flatlined. There's no growth there really at all.
There it is, way down at the bottom.
Yes, and it's way down at the bottom.
Oh, it's like, there is it.
It looks like the bottom of the graph.
And then, you have state funding, and you see state funding there is in decline, and it's in kind of a gradual decline, and we expect that that's going to decline, unfortunately. And then, of course, we have our local support, which, handedly, even though it's at the bottom, is very generous. You'll notice there, it's at the same level as the federal government. So it's a great generous community that we live in, and it's, and, I say, a great complement to the district. And so you can see federal revenues, federal and local revenues are fairly flat, state revenues declining, and so it's really our property values that are making the increase here. And so let's look at that trend here. Our Orange County annual home value appreciation is 5.75%. That's amazing, that really is just absolutely wonderful. And the OC median home price, though, this is the, this is the kicker, the, the not-so-good news, the, the median home price now exceeds the previous peak level by 8.1%. So when you look at this chart here, you can see off to the far right, that's where we're at now. In 2018, it is about 8% higher than that previous peak. So when you think about that, there's a lot of, how much more can it go up? That's the question.
Start talking about the R-word.
And so, we're a little concerned about that.
No R-words.
Not sure what to think of it. We are concerned, and it gives us cause to pause for a moment and be cautious about the out-years. And especially when you have the UCLA Anderson School of Business saying, hey, look, it's going to, they just came out today with their prediction of 3, 2, 1. So GDP growth, 3%, 2% next year, and 1% the following year. Not what we'd really want to see in, in that regard. And, and so it just goes, when, when, for our district, since we are so heavily reliant upon property taxes, and property taxes have been remarkably resilient and robust, periods of high economic growth often sow the seeds of their own demise. So, but there's, there's some room here to be cautious about the out-years. So let's, let's talk about our budget revisions that we made. So we, we adjust our assumptions in light of new information. And since, since we have adopted the budget, our, and this is kind of interesting, we, we adopt your budget in June before we really know where we're going to land at the end of June. So there's a little bit of cleanup that comes in at first interim, and you'll see that in the numbers here. So revenue was substantially increased. And so when you look at this unrestricted revenue, which includes our property taxes, is up about 6.7 million. And that's due to, the auditor controller came out with his estimate of property taxes for 1819, and it was more resilient than we had expected, which is good news. And then, lower mandated costs, the, we get reimbursed, reimbursement from the state for things that the state tells us we have to do, mandated to do, and that's one-time money essentially. And the governor cut that, and, and so we've reduced our assumption for that. And then our restricted revenue increased by about 1.6 million, and that's driven by increased community support, which is normal. That's the normal pattern for us. As we begin the year, you know, we get additional community support, and so that's a good thing. And then, we had to, that was offset somewhat by a lower, this was a correction for career technical education to align that with the real money that we believe we're going to be getting. So with that then, expense was substantially increased, and you can see unrestricted, oops, here we go, I'm sorry, I moved on before I should have moved on. Here we are at June adoption, this is what we said we were going to come out, unrestricted, restricted in total in terms of revenue, and here's where we are now. So nice, up and to the right chart, very, that's what we want to see. So here, though, expense was substantially increased, and when you look at, at this, you can see here, here's where you are in June, and then here's where we are now. And you can see there's a fairly large increase there on the restricted side and some on the unrestricted side. Unrestricted went up about 1.5 million, staffing came in lower than we expected by about 280, and non-staffing was higher by about 1.8 million.
What was that mean?
And most of that, you know, it's, it's interesting, non-staffing is kind of, has, has had a shift here over the course of a number of years. So in 1314, we were spending about, when you, you look at 1314 compared to 1718, we're spending 2.6 million more in core curriculum. So that's textbooks, books, those kinds of things going into the classroom. And then another 1.6 million more in computer stuff. So i.e. Chromebooks.
Chromebooks.
So there's a lot going into the classroom, about 4 million, 4 million more dollars going in the classroom in 1718 compared to 1314. And that's a dramatic shift for us. That's, that's a fairly big shift in, in terms of how things have happened, financially speaking. So restricted expense, though, went up by 8.2 million, staffing's higher by 1.5 million, and non-staffing's higher by 6.7 million. And much of this is due to cleanup from the June adoption, loading, beginning fund balances for the restricted side. So just a lot of cleanup on the restricted side. And so let's talk about other financing uses and adjustments. We've increased our support for nutrition services and support for restricted programs, including the special ed, major maintenance instructional materials, LCFF supplementary, that's mainly instruction going to the sites to help with the unduplicated pupil, which is the, sorry, the.
Homeless foster youth and?
Yes, thank you, homeless, foster youth, and English learners.
And then help for Vanessa, too.
Yes.
Lowen.
Oh, yeah, she's here.
And then, we, Ms. Olson's group runs a great teacher induction program, and we've wrote the budget up for that because it wasn't included in the, in the June adoption. So that was a correction on our part. So with that then, you can see here, that's where we were at June adoption, and then first interim where we end up. So let's talk about our ending fund balance, and this is a conscious decision, we are reducing the ending fund balance slightly, and so that's reduced by about 1.1 million, and the restricting ending fund balance remains the same, zero. So let's look at the multi-year outlook, and one thing you need to remind, to know is that there's only one thing certain about a budget, and that is it will be wrong. So, but let's take a look at what the out-years look like. So multi-year, when we look at, let's look at, here's, this is a wonderful line, look at that revenue line. Isn't it wonderful? It's up and to the right, that's what we always want to see. And, and so we can just have, feel really good about that until we bring in the expense line. And there's the expense line, and you see the expense line for 1718 is riding higher than the revenue line, and, and we're struggling to keep that expense line below the revenue line. And, and that's just an acknowledgement that you have got the pedal to the metal, and we're struggling to keep up with board-directed priorities. And, and some of these are in terms of multiple curriculum adoptions, air conditioning, and site facility safety, security enhancements. These are big-ticket items, and, and we're stretching, stretching to make that happen, financially speaking. So then, and some concerns going forward are pension costs, CalSTRS, oh my, wow, I wonder why that shows up. I did have values in there. So CalSTRS is going from 14, 14.43% to 18.6%. And CalPERS is going from 15.5% to 24.6. These are dramatic changes in our pension rates. And for, over the course here, this means that we're going to add 10.1 million dollars, essentially, to our compensation. And so that's equivalent to adding 5.5% on the salary schedule. So this is a large, a large piece of compensation. And, and in 1819, it's about 28.2 million in total, or 1,410 dollars per ADA.
Oh, man.
So let's talk about property taxes, and, and another concern we have is volatility in, in property taxes. Since the Great Recession, we have experienced some volatility, and the 10-year average is about 4.63%. We're, we're riding much, much, very, how do I say, above that level right now. And the federal tax changes, interest rates, lower affordability are known unknowns that could impact property values. So we know they're out there, we just don't know what the impact's going to be, or when it's going to hit, that kind of thing. And so you can see here, we do experience volatility in our property tax revenue. And so, you know, try to run, you know, an operation like yours at half a billion dollars a year, that, that can cause some issues in terms of trying to.
Anxiety, yeah.
Anxiety, yes, thank you. And so let's talk then a little bit about responsible ending fund balance. And right now, your ending fund balance exceeds the 3% required, it's at 4.5, and that's 14.8 million. And then you have a stabilization reserve to help absorb any kind of shocks or protect the priorities that you have given direction to move forward on, and that's at 15.2 million. And so when you look at that, that is down and to the right, but it's, it stabilizes out in 1920, and that's what we expect it'll happen. And it's a responsible level in which to have. And it's about, when you count all of your reserves, you have about 13.43%. And in comparison to all unifieds, all unifieds have 16.64%. So we're slightly below the average. Being a base, a community-funded district, we should probably be a little bit above the average, and we'll work to get there.
Would you say that last one again?
Yes, so we, you have 13.43% in reserve. Unified districts on average have 16.64%. So we are slightly below the average for a unified district, and being a community-funded district, we should be slightly above the average.
My question was because you said we are 13%, and I look at 4.5 and 15, and that doesn't add up to 13?
Oh, so, I'm sorry, yes.
So I just.
You have Fund 17, which we can count towards your reserve level. So there's another 15 or so, yeah, 15 million in Fund 17, so you have a total of about 45 million in, in reserves. And you divide that into a total expense of 328 million. That gives you about-
And Fund 17 is?
Oh, thank you. Fund 17 is a special reserve fund. And that's, it's not really for facilities, but it's for really board-directed kinds of things. I know in the past, the science has been funded out of that, special science programs, those kinds of things, so.
That's not the, is that the TIC fund?
Yes, that is the TIC fund.
Okay. That's the gift from the Irvine, Irvine Company, which started at about eight million and we can only spend a percentage of it every year.
Correct.
Gross, cool.
Thank you.
The TIC fund?
The Irvine Company, TIC.
The Irvine Company.
We'll send some information out on that, some historical-
It was a large gift that was given to us.
And so let's, just closing thoughts, revenues are robust and, but there's a number of factors that are flagging that we may be entering a slower growth period. Expenditures are increasing dramatically. And that's just that, you know, we're stretching to meet the board-directed priorities that you have set. And we're doing that. And then the district really is financially positioned well for a slower growth future. And so we're up and to the right. And that's a good, that's what we want to do. And so we do recommend, staff recommends a positive certification on your first interim. And if you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Ms. Thor. I don't remember the stabilization fund. Is that, is that, have we always had the stabilization board? I can't remember when we-
That was instituted about four years ago. And it's part of your general fund. And it rides in conjunction with reserve for economic uncertainties.
Okay.
So I think a lot of it, when we were going up in the percentage on the, you know, CalPERS and STIRS, I think we were concerned-
Well, is this part of the, when the governor told us the basic aid, we could be, we could have, most districts can have, it's based on the size. They can only have 3% or whatever. And we were, we were allowed to go up to, up what, 18%?
Yes.
And so this is, that's the part that we put in into that fund?
Yes.
And that's because nobody will bail us out.
That's correct. We could be in a freefall for over 100 million dollars a year, so.
Thank you.
Mrs. Snell.
I've heard that there is a possibility of getting more funding from the new governor, the one-time funding. Didn't you, I mean, he was talking, they were talking about it on the news. You're looking at me.
But they do that with the new governor every year with-
Well, they're saying that there might be some one-time funding or he might use that money for some of his own projects, which is preschool. Yeah, but he might give some of it. So what are you hearing that?
Well, we do know that Governor-elect Newsom is really trying to move forward with the preschool education. And so we think that's where the new money will come towards.
But he does have money to give out, is what I'm saying.
We think he does, yes.
We think he does.
But how much he'll shake, how it will come to us.
He's made a lot of promises and so, but I don't know. The projection that the person I was listening to projected that he might give some of the schools some one-time money.
He might.
Well, that's better than, you know, nada.
Well, and I'd like to add something. You know, that has been a maneuver that the current governor has used because it keeps him from funding Prop 98 to let it grow. And so he's trying to keep Prop 98 down. So what does he do? Instead of funding Prop 98, he gives everybody one-time money. That's good for us because we don't get anything from Prop 98.
Yeah.
But it's not really good for funding levels in the state.
No.
As far as individual school districts. And we're fortunate to be funded at the level we're funded. All districts in the state of California should be funded like we're funded, but they're not. And these are again, accounting strategies to make sure that the education fund doesn't continue to grow.
Mrs. Yelsey.
Oh yes, I move to approve the 2018-19 first period interim board of district financial status.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Mrs. Yelsey and seconded by Mrs. Black. Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we have board, modification to the board policy, Mr. Lee Sun.
Good evening, I'm back.
Yay!
Okay, let me open this up. All right, so this is the one remaining policy brought back to you for its second reading. The last time we talked about this, just as a reminder, this would be a new board policy, though the law that this is mirroring has been around a while and it's related to firearms on school grounds. And what we were struggling with was the exact wording to capture what I think we all had agreed was important to be explicitly stated in the policy. And that is possession of a firearm is also prohibited in school buses and district vehicles. So we kind of wordsmith that to capture that we wanted that, to add that to the policy. And then we deleted the words that we were considering, the school vehicles slash buses on the top. So that's the only change between the first reading and tonight's proposal.
Did you, I thought you, I thought you changed it to in school buses.
Yeah, that's what he said, but it's not that way on here.
It's not that way on here.
Possession of a firearm is also prohibited in school buses and district vehicles.
And ours has on. So I just wanted, I wanted to make sure that it was correct on that. And on mine, it says on.
It's like when students are on the buses, I know that's where the, but-
So I just wanted to make sure that what you-
Sitting on the roof of the bus.
That's what we're adopting.
Okay.
In.
In.
Move approval of board policy 3515.7. Was that Karen? Okay, it's been moved by Mrs. Flor, seconded by Mrs. Yelsey. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7-0. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along.
Oh my gosh. Now you have to read again. Board reports. Let me make sure. Oh, community input on non-agenda items. We don't have any cards? We do have, oh, that's a card. I forgot they're bigger. Okay.
Are we doing this now?
Yes, we are. Community input on non-agenda items.
Okay. This is an opportunity for the public to address non-agenda topics within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per board policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes. Speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers and there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. In compliance with board policy and the Ralph M. Brown Act, the board is not permitted to take action on non-agenda items. When addressing the board, it's helpful if you state your name and address for the video
Mr. Logan.
Good evening, board, President Montoro, friend Navarro. I come today as a CSA representative, our parliamentarian. I have one of the few things we get very, very rarely in maintenance, a thank you letter from Ray Elementary.
Oh!
Filled with hand drawn thank you letters and everything. If I can, I'll approach the board and pass it up to you.
What did you do so well?
Over the summer, a handful of us maintenance personnel were over at Ray Elementary to do a simple fix of light. And we looked, it's like, nothing in here is right. So for the fact that we had the lift over there doing some other work, we went in there, changed out all the lights over the summer, did the soy building and the Boys and Girls Club, but they never noticed until the time change. Because of so many big windows up in the apartment building, they never noticed until the time change. And then we got, like, we got the time change, that showed up at the MNO site saying, oh, thank you, we can stay in our area for fixing the lights.
That's so great. Thanks for sharing that.
You know, and it's the fact that, you know, we use man lifts, ladders and all other forms of equipment to do this type of work is why we're always pushing for better training and more updated training on the use of those tools and equipment to keep us all in a safe, productive theater.
That is great.
That's so cool.
And just another quick thing, during our small deluge of rain we had last week, we had our elections for our new 1819 E-Board. As it stands right now, President Pam Sanders, uncontested. Vice President, Stu Tedford, uncontested. Secretary Rochelle Mittlander, uncontested. Treasurer, Eleanor Rebar, uncontested. Chief Jobsteward, Shing Katz, uncontested. Parliamentarian, Gary Logan, appointed. Webmaster, Adriana Agleao, appointed. Past President, Dave Johnson. And our new Public Relations Officer, Amy Chin.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to everyone.
So even with the floods going on, because we had to change locations last minute because the room we normally use, every time we opened the door, was taking on water.
Not good.
So we ended up having to talk to HR real quick and they're able to move us into the testing room right there where we had the awning and able to conduct our CSA business. So again, thank you for your support.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you for your support, yeah.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Montoro. Good evening, everyone. This is just a small, very quick housekeeping matter. I'm not picking on you. You happen to be the presiding officer, so I want to point this out to you. For the Brown Act and open meeting purposes, rules of order, when you're calling for a vote, it's very important that after you ask for those in favor, that you ask for those opposed. Otherwise technically the motion is invalid, so just, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to my attention. I'll be completely perfect next time. I think I'm like-
Positively perfect.
Practically perfect in every way. Me and Mary Poppins, I'll come in with an umbrella. I think maybe that's what I can agree with, the budget and my first month will definitely, something will go wrong. Thank you, Mr. Smith. I appreciate it. All right, now we move on to board member reports. Mrs. Snell.
Hmm, okay. Well, I just have a couple of things. I too enjoyed the CSBA conference. I went to several workshops. One of the most interesting was the OPEP workshop, which I had some briefing from you, but I was able to go in and get into it more deeply. It was nice to get to know the new board members. We were able to have a lot of meals together and not talk business. And I also wanted to compliment MNO for, and I, somebody's probably going to speak about this, for all the rain, all the rain issues and how fast they got out there and solved them. It's probably on somebody's agenda to speak about that. And if not, I hope somebody does speak about the Emergency Operations Center and how you went into, you went into it for the first time since 2012 or something, right? Is that what you said?
No, we had it last year.
Oh, oh, I thought you said it hadn't been-
I was wrong.
Was, oh, you were wrong? Oh, okay.
It's a day of wrong.
I thought you had done it once before, but I can't remember what it was for.
It was another rain episode and we were afraid that Newportale was going to get wiped out by waves somehow. And so we had lined, we lined up a bunch of buses out there in case, and so we activated the EOC.
It's very interesting. We got a little report on it, so it'd be great to share a summary of it. And that's it.
I also loved the CSBA conference. Some of the workshops that I went to, one thing that was notable is at the state level, the EL roadmap, the English language roadmap for the first time since 1986. There's state-level legislation that's changing from English only to a statewide acceptance of the value of students that are learning English and Spanish. So that was really amazing to see. I'd love to learn about that more. And then I went to another one that was on strategic communication and talked about focusing on some of the positive things at school sites and having a signature event where people could come and really get to know the principal, see what's going on in the campuses, which is something that would be a great idea for Westside schools that are already doing great things and often have art events, but not everyone in the neighborhood knows about them sometimes. And then I went to one that was called Achievement in Motion that addressed opportunity gaps and how we can work together with the community, but also with other districts and partner to address opportunity gaps. Yeah, so it was a really wonderful event and I learned a ton. So that was, that was the best. And then I'm looking forward to, I went to Pomona Elementary to their PTA holiday party and there are several going, there's several this weekend, Wilson and Ray and Whittier. So looking forward to all of those.
And all the holiday, all the performances. Yeah.
I too enjoyed the conference. I think my-
Somebody move her microphone, is it broken?
I'm so quiet. I'm a sheet glatter. My favorite, I think, was Driving Innovation was a session that I attended. It was great to see how many things that we do well. And it was great to see that there's just a few details we could implement that would probably make things even better. So it's nice when the changes are details and not full-scale things. I think it was a really positive learning experience for me. I also really enjoyed getting to know the board members. And then I'm looking forward to attending Harbor's Holiday Show this Friday.
I just want to welcome the new board members. And it was great spending time, I think for all of us with you in San Francisco. I happen to pick a lot of the conferences on mental health and wellness. And just one, and I mentioned it to Dr. Navarro, but I'd like to talk about it, or mention it in public so that it can be talked about for next year, is there's a school that is also in challenge success, Manhattan Beach High School. And they have a similar calendar to ours right now and they're trying to change it. But in the meantime, they still have their first semester final exams before the holidays. They just have a shorter first semester than second semester. And I'd like to see if maybe, since we have not moved our calendar, if we could possibly do that because it does benefit the kids and the teachers for not having to work over the holidays and study. Also, all the holiday programs and the musical performances are fabulous. We're all going to those. I know students are very anxious this week at a lot of the high schools because they hear about early acceptance college admissions. And I know every day they're waiting, but it comes over the next week. So good luck to them. I hope they get into the college they would like. And also, one other thing, it's not for a while, but I think we need to start thinking about it because we approved already the Corona Del Mar fields to start in June. I know some of the teams are already anxious what they're doing for next year. And so I think they need to start scheduling where everybody's going sooner rather than later, so they don't have to wait till the last minute to know what they're doing and also for them to have an input on it.
Mrs. Yelsey, could I give you a quick update on exactly that question? Mr. Halt and Mrs. Scott have been communicating and in fact, Dr. Baumeister and I have been in on that communication. So they're already starting to plan for where each one of the different sports are going to be practicing.
Okay, well, they probably should include the coaches too because several have mentioned to me that they don't know what's going on.
That's all being discussed.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, so I too enjoyed the conference all the way up until the morning I left. Unfortunately, I've been bragging for the last four years. I haven't, you know, gotten sick and I ended up flying home with 101 fever. And definitely was kicked, like in the back of the head by a horse is what it felt like. So I've kind of been under the weather and I feel better now. But, and I hate missing the musical programs, you know, because it really does get you in the spirit. And I too went to a lot of mental health, you know, different programs that they had for different schools. And the districts that have been really, you know, doing, working hard with their communities, you know, on the mental health, have really even now have found more challenges that they didn't know. And as we are, we're looking and seeing that, you know, it's when we think we may start to see some headway. So there, a lot of frustration. So we talked about it- So we talked about it in Delegate Assembly, you know, that we'd like to maybe, you know, focus our energies on that, mostly in, you know, full and fair funding, which is, we're going to continue that discussion, but it'll be great. And then also, as we, I have Student Advisory, they're coming up with some, hopefully we'll pin them down to a couple items. And so I'll share that with you as soon as we know. So that's it.
It was great for me. I mean, going back and seeing my old friends. A couple of interesting items that, from a board member's perspective, many of the school districts in the state of California have gone through and are going to district-wide elections. And many of the top leaders in CSBA who were board members long-term have lost their seats. The President, my good friend Frank Pugh, who was on the Santa Rosa City Schools for 28 years, and is President of NSBA, lost his seat by 144 seat votes. And again, that's, that's been up and down the state with a number of very, very close elections. And we can even see it within our, our own communities. So that was interesting. Dana and I had the opportunity to participate in the governance portion of CSBA and we have elected a new Vice President who is from, a delegate from San Diego. The interesting thing was that she violated our campaign rules and was still elected. So, and it had it listed against her name.
Right on her ballot.
Right on her ballot that she violated campaign rules. And many, many of the delegates are upset that she wasn't censured and pulled off. But that's interesting. I went to a number of great conferences and I will have these books and I'll get them to you. I think we can ask for CSBA. CSBA has Education Legal Alliance, which we are members of. These are all the legal cases. We are working towards full and fair funding. And then this is also one that I'll get all of you. It's the Policy Platform and Programs.
I think they were there.
This is our policy platform.
I picked them up for you guys.
But I went to, I went to three, and I'm glad that, I think Russell will probably talk about one of them that he went to, that I sat in on. But I went to one that was offered by Placer Union High School District. And you know, we have been talking about student board members and the selection process. And this one was a phenomenal selection process. They are a high school district. They have four high schools. The interesting thing is that you can, you apply as a sophomore, but you're selected, it's an application process, you're selected. You can be a junior or a senior. It doesn't go through ASV. There's no credit given. The kids have to produce a three-minute video as part of their application process. It's quite extensive. And then they go through, there's a small board selection committee that interviews all of them. They have upwards of 20 students. They try and make sure that there's a balance. And then they go through extensive training the year before. So they're selected like in June of the, of their sophomore, you know, the ending of their sophomore year. They attend, they ask, actually attend, they're asked to attend two board meetings to get a feeling before they're appointed so that they go to that. They receive Brown Act training and they are given a provisional vote and they vote first on, on every agenda item. And then they rotate. There's four of them that are selected. They each represent one school. And then on top of that, they also have what they call is student voices and it's run by, through the superintendent. And their responsibility is to get 100 students quarterly to meet with the superintendent, no other staff, it's just, the student board member organizes, selects these 100 students to interface and have conversations. And they've actually made some difference. One of the items that they were complaining about and they were getting from the students was there's not enough time, there's only 15 minutes for us to get our lunch. The lines are way too long. Can't we please have vending machines that have nutritious things that we could get? Through the superintendent and through working with, they were able to make that change. Another one was in the women's bathrooms, there was not, there was not feminine products. And they said, you know, we need those things and we're tired of going to the office and being embarrassed. So they were able to effect change. And so these, 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 these young ladies, they all used, they were young ladies, were all very instrumental in actually driving some interesting policy decisions at the, at their schools and for the district. And so it was, it was a wonderful opportunity. Another one that I went to, which is, and I think this is a fabulous, brand-new book, It's Grading for Equity, it's by Joe Feldman. It's about actually looking at grades and how grades, same students, you know, doing identical work, one, and it's all about participation, turning in homework and all of that and how to grade effectively. And then we didn't realize what a great sense of humor Tony DiMarco has. We had a wonderful, we went to the wonderful session on the Brown Act and he was just hysterical along with David Vasquez, I think, from Fagan, Full Frost and Friedman. And again, a great, a great conversation. So it was, it was a terrific conference. Learned a lot this time.
Who would have thought two attorneys could have the crowd laughing? And we only harassed him just ever so slightly. One exciting, I don't remember what he asked for, but he said, are any of your school districts doing this? And Mrs. Flor and I raised our hands and we're the only ones saying, yes, we know the two of you are doing that. So it was kind of good.
Was it good or bad?
It was a good thing.
It was great.
It was, it was a good thing. Whatever it was we were doing, it was a good thing.
Closed captioning.
It was closed captioning.
That's right, closed, that's right, you were in the back. Closed captioning of our agendas. And we were feeling very, so Mrs. Franco, Annette Franco, our Public Information Officer, who is still home with baby Emma, would be so proud because we were able to raise our heads high. In addition to all the wonderful stuff at the board meeting. And I too want to thank the two of you for adjusting your schedules at that last minute because it's so good to meet with people as people. And we are a board of people and we all bring different aspects and points of view and that's so important for a board. We don't, we don't all want to be nodding our heads at the same time. I also was able to, when we came back, attend the Educational Development Institute with Mrs. Leary. And it was on preschool education and it was all over, not even just the county, because I know there were some people there from Long Beach, I think. But it was talking about the access to the data and the correlation between what children leave preschool with and how they will perform on the S-Back. And it was as we thought, that children that know there's some ABCs and perform well on the Early Developmental Index, perform well on the S-Back. And it just, it is interesting information since the governor is very pro early childhood education. And I also know that the county is going to get very active and that they would like to partnership with Costa Mesa. If they do, with the city, that will definitely affect us. So I'm pretty excited. That was a pretty exciting thing to do. And I don't know, who would ask Mr. Fitzpatrick? Probably Mr. Sir. Would you ask him to forward the schedule of all the holiday performances to Mrs. Bartow and Ms. Anderson? Because, did you guys get it already? Never mind, he'll be happy, doesn't it?
I forwarded it.
You did?
Thank you.
Because you were so, such a good president. I need to take notes. Okay, because believe me, it was in teeny-diny little font and it's this big. And the students perform fabulously all over. So I'd like that. One of the things that I did discover though, and I thought I would bring it up to us as a board, because we are now, because five of us were elected at large and two of us were elected in zones. And the concern is that we think zonally and not districtly. So we go to all sorts of stuff. And we, this is what we do. We come here and we talk about it. What I used to do was make a big, long list and I asked, Mrs. Snell, please don't call on me first because as it went down, I'd cross off things somebody else talked about. But to the public, sometimes it's us going, ah, na, 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 na. So Dr. Navarro, I had, he had a great idea and I said, that sounds good. If we can get a list of what we attended to the office, to Sherry.
Or to Carrie, to me, yeah, one of us.
To one of them. To the secretary and the secretary secretary. About what we did for the list, it'll go out in the Friday Report.
The Monday.
In the Monday Report. It'll, oh, it'll go out in the board briefing. So the community will know what we went to and they won't have to wait to hear the endless things that we did. And then we can pick the one or two things that we wanted to bring up and share with the board. So the community will know how active we are, how busy we are. Of course, maybe they'll never want to be on the board, so we have to be careful. But I think that would be great because that way we'll all have, but we have to remember and it'll take time. I remember when we used to have to get, as principals, had to get information to our Public Information Officer and she would do a report on what's happening at the schools. And you'd go to a board meeting and go, oh, I was going to send that in and I forgot. So if we could try it, or what do you think, what do you think of that idea, board?
The only question I have is, you know, some members of the board are invited to things and some board members are not. And a lot of us, you know, some of us go when we're not invited, we just want to pop in. And some of us only go when we are invited. So the question is, is, does that mean that all of us will receive all of the invitations and will they be all forwarded to us so that we can pick and choose? Or should we only go to those, those event? I mean, that's my only question because it's just a difference in of opinion of how, where, where.
You have to know.
But I don't even, I mean, do you want just, like, going to a school and just visit? I mean, I pop into schools sometimes.
I don't like it.
I don't really either. I don't know.
Okay.
You know why? It's, because it's like, I don't need something else to fill out. And sometimes I go, I don't know, it just, it seems like you're, you're braggadocious. Yeah, I, you know, I, but I agree with you, going down and just saying everything. I mean, I remember when I was in PTA and I was sitting over there and I would listen to you guys up here and I'd think, oh, wow. It was like, kind of boring. Yeah.
Starting, wah, 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 wah.
Kind of boring. But I do like when someone brings up something, Karen's really good at doing this. You know, she brings up something kind of interesting that she did. She doesn't, you don't seem to feel a need to list everything you did. Yeah, you just talk about, I went to several, if something really stood out, I like that. I would like to see the, these reports be more like that and not just listing everything you did. But that's just my opinion and I was already voted down earlier today.
Poor Mrs. Snell.
Okay, I'm ready to move on. Let's go.
We don't even have to make a motion. I just wanted to get an idea. So if, if we would like as a board to decide, just to say, let's just pick the one or two things that were, hey, everybody, I bet you'd like to know this and the public would like to know this. And just assume that we're all so busy we can't see straight and that works.
Yeah, because we are.
I know there's weeks when I don't do anything and there's weeks when I go and I check in at home.
Like next week is crazy. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, next week is easier for me than this week.
So see, so it works. Okay, that's perfect. Great.
Sorry.
That's right. Any board committee reports.
I don't like change.
So Mrs. Snell, it did change and your suggestion was well received.
Well, I do, I won't have a report this time because our board meeting is Thursday for Coastline ROP, but it says committee reports.
I just said that.
Let me finish.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
I think it'd be really helpful that if we are on a committee, that we have committee reports. In other words, if there's a youth council, because that's one of the committees, then let's get a report. If it's CAC, then let's get a report. If it's DLEC, let's get a report. Instead of, I mean, we, and I can give you a list, you know, Sherry, of when, when ROP meets because ROP generally meets.
She gives me the calendar.
Once a month, but we, we should know when, when that gets plugged in to one of our, one of our meetings. But they should be, we should all be prepared to make a report at a designated meeting.
And frankly, that's something you could put in your report on Monday. I mean, I don't know.
Yes.
Or we can verbally do it, you know, as long as it's not too long of a report. We'll be up here for, yeah.
No, but I think it would be nice to list what committees should be up at which meeting.
Yeah.
Can we do that?
We have a roster that Veronica sends out to the board. It has all the committees and every meeting date on there. So everyone knows that.
But I was.
So you're asking me to put every meeting, every committee listed on the agenda for a report?
Just the, the meeting after, the, the meeting after the committee meeting.
So basically the answer is yes.
Yeah, go, go on. That, that has met.
For example, at this meeting, youth sports met.
Yeah, but see, sometimes things gets changed and she's not going to know. I just think it needs to be during our report, like you said, or after the report, you call the committees. Maybe it's something you.
As president.
Yeah, we should give you a list or whatever. I don't think it needs to be on the agenda.
Well, just tell you that what we're going to report.
Yeah.
Got it. So it's going to, you're going to still say board committee reports?
I think it should say what it is because the, if there's someone that comes and they want to know, say it says Board of Education Committee Reports and it says next to it, DLEC, Crop, like if it has a specific item and someone wants to know what the report is from that item, there could be someone that comes just for that, that portion. So I think it should reflect what, which reports will be shared at that meeting.
And would that be, I'm, are you done?
Yeah.
That's, that's a flaw I'm working on, making sure you're finished. My whole life I've been working on this. I'll get it right eventually. Just the board, the board committees that we, were above the line, the ones we have to go to, the ones that are below the line that we go to because we want to go to, that'll be part of our board reports.
Yes.
But the, the committee reports, so what does anybody?
Oh, the first part.
The first part, those ones that the board is required to send a board member to. Now.
If you want it on the agenda, you have to get it to Sherry.
You have to get it to Sherry.
Yep, get it to Sherry.
Bye.
Who's laughing?
Bye.
By Thursday because she's, by Thursday. Is Thursday enough?
Before Thursday.
Because the board gets, the agenda gets posted on Friday and we want Sherry to have plenty of time. Not be, we're not a problem.
So just to clarify, it's just those that were not the opt, the ones we decided on tonight?
Correct.
Essentially. Okay.
So if you have a report.
To you guys.
And literally it can just be, Sherry, I'm going to have a report at the meetings and you can list that, there will be a DLEC report.
Okay.
And then those, since you have multiple people, example, going to DLEC, you guys decide who's going to do the report. So we don't have three DLEC reports, as much fun as that would be.
And turn in the agenda.
And if it's not turned in, then it just, I guess you can just report. I, I'm still struggling with whether it has to be on the agenda.
Can I just make, can I just make a quick, easy suggestion?
Yes, please.
That's a lot of communication.
Yeah.
And what we'd rather do is we can just list the committees that are, that are, you know, that are required. And at the meeting, you can say whether you were able to attend or not and then give a report.
Yeah, it could be an oral report, but I think it's important to share what has happened.
It's what we do, but we don't, it just says committee reports. And other than Crop and Youth Sports, it's just kind of out there.
That's kind of, yeah, what we've done.
They're overlooked.
They're, they're kind of, yeah, we need to do a better job.
So we'll just put down all the committees that were voted on today as a regular example of the, of the reports that you can expect. And then it's up to you to, if you attended or, or it might have been canceled, we don't know. But that would be a lot easier if we just listed the board reports that you can expect from the committees. We don't need to do more lists.
Can we discuss this on Thursday instead of making a decision tonight?
Probably not because I'm not in charge of the agenda. Deb Dudley is.
Oh.
So basically the change that will occur from Ms. Anderson, do you still have? Do you have more to say? I just have to turn your light off.
Should turn you off.
Sherry?
We're not voting on that.
We're not voting on it.
No, 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 I'm just clarifying. No, 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 I'm just clarifying. I am clarifying. The only change that's going to happen is, the committees are going to be listed on the agenda.
Yeah, just examples of committees for reports.
Just examples of committees that would have reports. Okay. Thank you. Okay, hold on. Where are we?
Superintendent.
Informal reports.
Okay. You know, I think it's important to know that, you know, the great work that's going on behind the scenes on how we're transforming data collection in our district, and that there's really a lot of work being done now to drill down to what kids are able to do and what they're not able to do, and really take a proactive approach to help those kids that are struggling, and to accelerate those kids that need enrichment. So I really am looking forward to coming back to the board with some reports about how our schools are using data differently, to make sure that our students are meeting some of the milestones that we have expectations for. And, and of course, as the year goes by, there'll be times when you'll be invited to attend data sessions. And thank you for attending our Fishbowl activity, when we did that with identifying the metrics with the high school principals and the middle school principals. That was a real lively, engaging conversation. So I just think, just kind of like to provide that basic announcement that we're looking at data differently, and we'll have some interesting, great conversations focused on how to make things better for kids, and how to support our teachers to make sure they're, they can make that difference that, so, you know, some of our kids truly, truly deserve and need.
I would say no report, but I do want to take a moment just to welcome our new board members, and thank you for the opportunity to join you at the conference. I think that sitting in our seats, it's good to go to those conferences, not just for the content, but also to get a better perspective of, the board perspective versus from where we come from. So thank you very much.
Two quick things. One is, you made me think of Mrs. Flor, and that's to update you, that this fall, we have installed feminine hygiene products in all of our secondary school bathrooms, and in the nurse's office of all of our elementary schools that are now there and stocked. So that made me think of that. The other is to give kudos to our maintenance and operations team. We've, we've now been without a full-time director for three months, and different ones of the managers have stepped up each time to take the lead in coordinating all of the work. It's given me a great opportunity to get to know them myself. And as we're now making the transition to the last of five of them, they've also, I think, learned how to work better as a team together. And as we encountered the storms this last week, they really took a great interest in getting out and getting after things. And so kudos to the managers for working through the challenges of stepping up to this job, but of course, all of the team that works with them, and they all did a great job, whether it's our custodians at each of our schools, some of them just, by the time the M&amp;O team got out there, they already had it resolved with their local resources. Other ones, some of the people that we sent out, but everybody worked really, really well together through this storm. So we owe them a great debt of thanks.
Do we have damage estimates?
Actually, not yet. And the good news is that it's largely because we don't see a lot of significant damage. Even in rooms where we had some standing water, it was extracted so quickly that night, and they were able to get fans in, that we've been able to dry out a whole lot of places. And so we're still looking. There are also some, some areas where we've had problems over the years that we're looking at a little bit more deeply to see why, why does it, we seem to have an issue at this particular area with these big storms. So we'll be putting together budgets to address those. But as to storm-specific damage from this storm, I don't expect it to be very significant, actually.
Did Lake Woodyear appear?
There's a lake at almost every school.
Yes, it definitely appeared. All of 18th Street was pretty much totally flooded. And the staggered release really worked well. Parents coming at different times worked really well. I happened to be driving on 17th, which was also flooded, so the Woodyear was taken care of. That was great.
My home was flooded.
So that's a, that's a shout-out to transportation, too, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Really, and you'll get, I'm sure that one of those people on that side of the room will get an update on the EOC.
And Shelley's right behind you.
But, but, you know, that was an amazing day, and transportation was ready, and they got out after things. Mrs. Humphries is here tonight.
Of course, she is back there.
Yes, she is. And she's, she's done a great job of finding her way around and figuring out how to be very helpful, and it's just gone very, very well. We owe all of our employees a great debt of thanks.
Great.
I just want to give kudos and stars to Mrs. Snell for going to and admitting that she went to the OPEB seminar at CSBA.
I liked it. I liked it.
I know, I liked it.
I know, it is. I told you guys. No report. Report happy holiday.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. I will talk a little bit about last Thursday, when the EOC was activated. I do want to disclose that my Titan app was working really well in my living room while I was on the couch on that day. Because I was homesick while all of this actually was going on. But, but it's amazing that, you know, I got the notification, you know, from my home, and started kind of monitoring what was going on. But I do want to acknowledge that the work that we have been doing in the area of safety, I think, really has paid off. And this was a really great example to, to test ourselves in a real-life situation, starting with Dr. Navarro activating the district EOC. We had just created a Titan group with our new enhanced EOC team, with everybody in their spots and backups for them. And they formed. Interesting enough, we just had a meeting about two, three weeks ago, where I called the EOC team together, and we simulated setting up the EOC area quickly, within six minutes.
Wow.
So we had just done it, and they actually had to do it in real life. We have some beautiful charts in the EOC now that was made by our own Tim out there, who creates all of our signs. So we really had made some great strides, and we were able to, to practice that. And I do also want to recognize Shelley, because that was a big part of this event, was, you know, getting transportation ready, deploying M&amp;O resources out there. And so even though a lot of things went well, the best thing about it is that we are learning from them. And there's a long list of questions and things to follow up on, and, and this was a great opportunity for us to continue to grow.
Great.
I have several, am I on? Yes. I have several things to share, and I would like to do it to the tune of the 12 Days of Christmas for you.
All right.
I'm totally kidding. I'm totally kidding.
Oh, darn it. No.
A little levity at the end here. So, no, I just wanted to wish you all a happy holiday. Thank you for your service to our district and to the staff and the kids here, and we look forward to working with you in 2019.